All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our September 27, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. We call this meeting to order. And as customary, start with our morning moment of silence. And we just wanted to see if there's any moment of silence that we have this morning.
Yeah, I do have a moment of silence.
All right.
Go ahead and go.
Yeah.
Do you have a moment of silence for tribal elder from Little Town Rancheria, Russell Davis? He passed natural causes Sunday morning. So I'd just like to give condolences to him and his family.
Kimberly, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next is the item four, consideration of extra items and not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any requests on that? It doesn't look like we do. And we'll move to item five, approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are commonly designed to be non-controversial. However, they can be pulled for further discussion and also, not only from the Board of Supervisors, but also from the public. And so far, I know I have item 5.3 that's pulled until October 4. 7.4, which is, well, that's not a consent agenda item. 5.8 for further discussion, and that will be done in a later time. And I don't know if there's any else from the board. I think Supervisor Sabatier.
5.2, and that's for following the next week or on a future agenda?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And so are there any from the board, requests from the board? I'll open it up to the public in case there is something that anyone from the public would like to pull from the agenda, and I will look online as well. I don't see any hands up. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve items 5.1 and 5.4 through 5.7 from the consent agenda.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And a motion carries. Let's see here. Oh, we are at 9:05, so we can go ahead and move on to our 6.1, which is public input. Commonly, public input is something that's not considered on the item for today, or agenda item for today, something that you can bring up and discuss. Just know that the Board of Supervisors will not be able to comment or answer to this discussion. But however, we do have one, Joan Moss. If you'd like to come up and state your name for the record, and then we'll start your timer for the three minutes. You go from there.
Joan Moss, I would like to ask you, the supervisors, to pass a resolution that takes money from your general fund and buys face masks. I understand from the administration that face masks are no longer mandated, and yet a lot of our officials have faced masks. And quite a few, I know at least one department head who publicly said that he was just getting over COVID. And I heard of another judge who's just getting over COVID. I think COVID, it's still an item that is an emergency, and it still needs to be addressed. And the people that come into the courthouse without a mask should at least have the gesture of goodwill that they can take a mask. And it's the security people that said there's no longer, you're no longer supplying a mask from the county. So the second thing I want to point out is a news item. Court orders federal government to produce records from top White House human health services officials and Missouri Attorney General's lawsuit. I think this is our jurisdiction because we listen to the COVID report, and we read Facebook and Twitter, and those are the items that have been censored, and other groups have been censored. So I would like you to point out that this is a lawsuit against people in high government. It includes President Biden and Fauci. And the last one I want to point out is that 21 counties have signed and supported Navy SEALs versus Biden over the mandated vaccines that Biden has tried to issue. Thank you. I have this, this, more details because I only have two. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
I want to get all the news, not just what the government approves of. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Joan. Are there any other people in the chambers that would like to come on up? State your name for the record, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall. Julia Carrera, Upper Lake, California. I'm here today at the request of the Upper Lake citizens who are circulating a petition due to the fact that they are not receiving the services they're entitled to receive in regard to the Upper Lake levee system, also known as the Middle Creek Diversion Project. This is the petition. It currently has 115 signatures on it, and more are being gathered, so I'm delivering this to you today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other, come on up and state your name for the record?
My name is Sam Boucher, and I live in Clear Lake Oaks. And I'm here to ask you guys to reconsider your refusing to waive the fees.
Well, this is on item 7.9.
Right. That's when we'll take that up. That was when we'll take that item up. You'll be able to speak during that timeframe when we take the item on the agenda up.
Okay.
Yeah. And just so folks know, if you're here for that item, I plan on taking that up after lunch, 7.9. So that will either be at 1:00 or 1:30 for sure, but I've already determined that that would probably be something we would take up at 1:00, as we have a really full agenda, but I don't want to, I don't want people waiting around not knowing when it's going to be discussed. So after 1:00 or after lunch will be the time we talk about 7.9. All right. Let's see. Any other public input from the chambers? If not, I'm looking on Zoom. I don't see anybody from Zoom. Wait one second. Nope. Okay. Bring it back to the board, and we'll close that item for public input and move on to our 9:10, which is presentation of employee service awards. This item will be, I'll give it to the CAO.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to introduce Pam Semic from Human Resources, and she will be making the presentations today for the, to recognize employees.
Good morning, Pam Semic, Human Resources Director. I also have Diana Rico, Deputy Director, with us. Twice a year, we honor our employees, and so we will be having each department head come up to honor their department employees and read the names. We'll call you in alphabetical order first.
Let me just hold.
Okay.
I'll be leaning over.
Thank you.
Let's try that.
All right. Great.
You look one more.
Thank you. First up is Rich Ford from the Assessor Recorder's Office.
Great. In our department, we're actually doing this by Zoom. And first up is Michelle Bouganou, and she's been here five years. And she's actually an appraiser too, and she has done a lot of professional growth with our department, professional and personal, has achieved a lot as far as training and certifications, and she has spent most of those five years with us. So thank you. Thank you very much for your service. And are we going to move on to the next slide? I'm thinking. There we go. There we go. All right. So Brian LeWelling is our cadastro person. He's also been with us five years, all those five years with our department, has done a tremendous amount of cleanup and progression with our cadastro, and has had tremendous personal growth. And we thank you so much for his service for our department, for the county. Next up is Landai. She's been with us 10 years, and for the most part, she's been with me almost the entire time of those 10 years. She has actually had tremendous professional growth and actually is our chief at this point. Started off as an appraiser aide, and she has done tremendous things professionally. She has actually just achieved advanced appraiser during that time. And again, we really appreciate her service, and appreciate all three of the people that achieved years of service. We have a great department, and these are just a great sampling of example of what's in our department. Thanks a lot, Landai.
Next, we have the Auditor Controller, Kathy Sagal. We have Max Beard, who's been here five years.
Good morning, Board. Hopefully you can hear me now. I was just unmuted. So thank you, Board, for allowing the opportunity to highlight the dedicated county workforce. So you see Max's picture here, and today we're recognizing Max Beard for five years of county service. And Max began his employment with the county in special districts. He promoted to administration, and he's been a valued member of the Auditor Controller County Board team for almost two years now. So thank you, Max, for your dedicated service.
Next, I'd like to call up Todd Metcalf from Behavioral Health to honor his employees.
Thank you, Pam. We have three folks that we would like to celebrate five years of service with Behavioral Services, starting with Christine Andrus, our fiscal program manager. Thank you, Chrissy, for hanging in here these last five years. Next, we have Michael Moss. Oh, yes. She does deserve a round of applause. Actually, they all do. Michael Moss, our prevention specialist. I don't know how we could do the work we're doing without him. He is an extremely dedicated and passionate employee, amazing man, and thank you also, Michael, for hanging in here these last five years. Melissa Poplin, Staff Services Analyst 2, also another amazing, passionate, and dedicated employee, helping us get our data together. I know some of you on the board are interested in that. So I want to thank Melissa for also sticking around for five years, hopefully five years more or more. Anyway, thank you.
Next, we have Gail Woodward, Child Development, Child Support Director. Is she in Zoom?
Nope.
Okay.
I think she's there.
All right. Well, we have Julie Vargo, who's been here 20 years. And Rosario Santana, who's been here 25 years. Next, we have Maria Turner, CDD Director.
It's my honor to honor a couple of our employees for five years. Eric Porter from the Planning Division. He is a solid, experienced planner who takes more than his fair share of the workload and planning. My favorite part about Eric, now that I'm back in the department, is he doesn't just accept what I say because that's what I say. So we end up having these really great planning discussions, which I think the collaborative approach in planning ends up with a much better product for public service. And so I really value Eric. Tina is a dynamic member of our code enforcement team. We are so glad to have her back after she's been gone for just a little while, and she has just picked up and run with all the tasks that were waiting for her. One thing about Tina is, one second, she's like a force of nature. She's just a strong personality, and then the others, the next minute, she's like laughing at something and just has like the joy of a child in her face. And I think it's all this multifaceted parts that make her her that actually benefit her out in the field. Because one of the things that code enforcement leads with first when we do our outreach is to bring people into self-abatement, and it's her nonjudgmental, meet you where you are, let's get you to where you need to go kind of attitude, I think, that is so powerful for code enforcement and for our community. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call the District Attorney, Susan Cronus, to honor her employees.
Well, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm thrilled to honor these wonderful workers in the office, in the DA's office, for their service. It's been, they're all incredible people. So first of all, 10 years, Gloria Gregor, and she is a Staff Service Analyst. She was a, in our office many, many years ago, and we just recently had her come back to our office. We're so excited that she's back. She knows so much about the way that, to present services, and she has a wealth of information over the years when she was in the Sheriff's Office, as well as now in our office. So we're very excited that she's back. So thank you so much. We have next, 15 years, Crystal Martin, and she's our Victim Witness Program Administrator. She is a force of nature, really. She is so passionate about serving this community, especially children who are victims, and she is so compassionate with people every day, and she has so much patience as well with people. So she is, I'm just really thrilled to have her as the administrator of the Victim Witness Office. She is, I go to her for advice all the time. So thank you, Crystal.
I see Ms. Rico is ready to hand stuff out. Nobody's coming up.
Oh, okay. Yeah, come up and get your swag. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you. And so next, we have John Greger, who has 20 years. He is currently in our office as a DA investigator. He recently came over from the Sheriff's Office. Sorry, Brian. But I just remember first meeting John when I was a deputy district attorney, and he was handling several cases, and I was so impressed by him. He knew what he was doing. He had all the answers. He was experienced and very, very professional, and he's always been that way. So he's in our office as an investigator, and he is basically just going in full force, helping our deputy district attorneys prepare their cases, very serious cases, too. So thank you so much, John. Come up. Thank you for your service. Is Gloria? Yeah. I'm like, they're here, but nobody's coming up. Thank you for your service. Okay. Up next, we have Rachel. I know her as Rachel Abelson. That's her court name, so, her office name. So she has 20 years. She's a senior deputy district attorney, and I can't say enough about how much I appreciate her work every day in the office. She volunteers to take on tasks when I'm away, when my chief's away. She does prayers, schedules, and everything. She has a wealth of experience. Everybody is always going to her and asking questions about legal issues, and she's dealt with them. If it's a legal issue, she's dealt with it, and she's so helpful to everybody in the office, and she's an excellent prosecutor. She has prosecuted and won major cases, including a murder case, as well as financial cases that involve a lot of records. I hate those cases, but she does a great job. So Rachel, come on up here. Thank you so much for 20 years. And we also have Tracy Davis with 25 years as a legal administrative assistant in our office. She, I think she came to our office, I was in the Family Support Division, and she came into the office, I think, a year before I came into the Criminal Division. She is a wealth of information, and I have to say, she has so much patience with the attorneys when we give her last-minute stuff. You just go to her and say, I need this in court, like in 10 minutes, and she does it. She knows how to do so much in the office. You don't have to tell her twice. She's so efficient, and she has saved lots of attorneys' behinds, so many times, so many times. So she is so faithful to the office, and we greatly appreciate her. So Tracy, come on up. Thank you for your service. Okay. Thank you.
Next, Shane French with IT.
Well, good morning. We have Angel Perez, who is an Information Systems Analyst. He's been with us for the five years. And, you know, talk about somebody who is the definition of a team player, always willing to just jump right into whatever's thrown at him, never a complaint, and just has such a great attitude about everything that we do. And it's not always easy because we're a small department, and everybody has to carry a big load. So I just, I really appreciate him.
Next, we have Christopher with the Library.
Hello. So today, we're honoring Barbara Green, who has 15 years of service at the library as a library technician supervisor. Barbara does a huge variety of wonderful and very important tasks at the library, but probably her most important is leading weekly storytimes. Just this year, she passed 50,000 attendees at her weekly storytimes, and that's inspiring young kids to read. So we really appreciate everything Barbara does for our community.
Thank you so much for your service. Next, we're doing probation.
Good morning, Board. First, I have Cindy Rodriguez for five years of service. Cindy's actually benefited a few departments. She came to us fairly recently after serving Todd very well for, I think, the first four years of her career. She was kind of thrown into the fire with us, doing much of our financial work. She's doing a great job. She's a Staff Services Analyst Senior, promoted from Staff Services Analyst, doing a great job. So thank her. And in 20 years, for 20 years, we have Ming Chao Chang, another one who's benefited multiple departments in our county. She spent the bulk of her career with county council before committing to us, I believe, in 2017. She came over as a legal secretary, back when that's what it was called, and now she's a legal administrative assistant. And just like to thank both of them and everybody here. You know, our long-term employees are our foundation. We know, we talk about recruitment and retention, and this is the big part of retention. They're our foundation, and without a foundation, you can't stand. So thank you for all of our long-term employees.
Next, Flarejean, Public Services Director.
Aiden, why don't you come on up here? I don't want to talk about someone unless they're standing up here with me, so. Sorry, Aiden, and it won't be long, so by the time he gets up here, maybe I'm done. But Aiden, Aiden, I'll come on up. Aiden Pearson, 15 years, all with public services, facilities maintenance lead worker. Prior to that, a technician. So as a lead worker, he's really the point person on most of the projects. He has a breadth of skill on building systems, HVAC, electrical, you name it, he knows it. So I want to thank him for his 15 years of service, but also uniquely, from one Air Force vet to another Air Force vet, I want to thank you for that service as well. So, Aiden, thank you very much.
Next, we have Scott DeLeone, Water Resources and Public Works Director.
Good morning. I have two employees today. Unfortunately, one was on a scheduled vacation, and the other is doing CPR training. So we're happy that she's at that. We'll start with our 20 years of service. This is Joe Matos. Joe is a heavy equipment operator 2 with our department, been here for 20 years. A lot of his work, very few people see, because he operates our street sweeper, and he has routes all over the county. He does his work early, early in the morning so as to not disrupt traffic, but a dedicated employee and does a great job for us. Do you want me to do Yulia? Okay. The other employee we had is Yulia Osotrova.
Sorry. Hold on, sorry. Sorry. How are you?
There she is.
Not my presentation?
No, but we're partnering with this, and you're throwing me under the bus. So Yulia is our Water Resources Engineer 2. She's been with us five years, handles everything water resources engineering-related, does a lot of work with our consultants, and is at CPR training. So glad that she's been with us for five years, and thank you very much, Yulia.
Next, we have Sheriff Barton.
Good morning. Thank you. We'll start out with the Jail Division. We'd like to recognize Deputy Sheriff Corrections Anthony Hodges for his five years of service. Anthony started out as a correctional aide and promoted a couple of years ago to the rank of Deputy Sheriff Corrections, and is a very influential on a lot of our newer employees out there. So thank you, Anthony. Eugene Ortega is our accountant, one of our Accountant 2s, primarily works on the jail accounts. As you see in the picture, Eugene's got a big smile on his face. I don't think you'll ever catch him without a smile on his face. Just a joy to be around and always, always fun to work with, and always has something nice to say when you run into him. Thank you, Eugene. And speaking of the jail, we'd like to make sure that the bars stay on the windows. Jeff Dolby is our maintenance, facilities maintenance technician out there, ensures that happens. The jail is, I like to refer to it as Lake County's largest bed and breakfast, and it has a lot of demanding customers that come to visit. Jeff, make sure that, make sure that the facility runs smoothly. And thank you. And thank you, Jeff, for your 10 years of service. And joining us today is Detective Dean Prater with 10 years of service. Dean is in our major crimes unit investigating, oh, Jeff's here. I didn't see Jeff back there. Come on up, Jeff. With 10 years of service, Dean Prater. He's in our major crimes unit. Dean also assists with the search and rescue. So when people go wandering out in the woods, Dean's available to help find their way home. Dean, come on up.
Thank you for your service.
Detective Todd Dunia with 15 years of service. I've had the pleasure of working with Todd from the beginning of his law enforcement career. We've had a lot of fun times together. Todd is a pleasure to have in the office. There's a few people around the office that will deal it out back to me as much as I deal it to them, and Todd's one of them. And unfortunately, this is going to be Todd's last employee service award, as he's announced his retirement. So I also want to congratulate him on reaching that milestone in his career and getting a service retirement later on this year. There's a lot of, there's a lot of homes that are safer. There's a lot of children that have had justice brought to them because of Todd's good work over the years. And if you're a parent, you should be thankful if there's men like this that stand ready to serve in this community. Thank you, Todd. If you have the unfortunate need to call 911, Anna Silva is one of the people that's likely to answer the phone. One of those, this is probably one of the rare times that you'll see the face of a 911 dispatcher, but that's Anna up there on the screen. For 15 years of service, she's been through all of the fires that we've experienced together in this county. She's dealt with literally thousands of emergency calls over the course of her career, and one of our top-notch, very professional, public safety dispatchers, Anna Silva. Thank you for 15 years of service. With 20 years of service, Jason Finley. Jason's been here longer than I have. There's a few people that I have, he's one of them. And as far as running the jail, there's, I don't think there's anybody out there that knows more about the ins and outs of running the jail, the various rules and regulations. We have laws we have to follow. We have regs that the state passes down. We have personalities that need to be managed, and Jason's been there through all of it. We've had lots of, lots of fun times. We've had an evacuation where we had to move everybody out, and Jason was there for that. I want to thank Jason for his years of service with the Lake County Sheriff's Office and Lake County Jail. This gentleman, I've known almost my entire life. I grew up playing baseball with his older brother and hanging around with him, coming around to watch the baseball games. With 25 years of service, our marine services sergeant, Sergeant Andy Davidson, spending all 25 years of his career right here with the Lake County Sheriff's Office. Want to thank him for the countless calls for service that he's had, both on patrol and both on the streets and out on the lake. Andy Davidson.
Next, we have social services. Crystal Marketan.
Good morning. Good morning, Board. Can we have everybody come up? Yeah, all the staff that have come in today. Let's just go ahead and come on up. Okay, good morning. So this morning, I would like to recognize a number of staff from the Department of Social Services. And just to reiterate something that I heard somebody say earlier, it is so important for us to, you know, do what we can to retain our, the people that we have employed at the department, and recognizing them here is one way to do that. And we just really value people that join the organization, stay with us, and grow with us. So I'd like to start out with five years is Louisa Correa Gray with eligibility. And I don't think Louisa is here. Next, at 10 years, we have Janice Devins, eligibility specialist two. Jonette Moffett, 10 years, currently serving as staff services analyst one. Two. Stephanie Albright, eligibility specialist supervisor. She is not here, but I'd like to thank Stephanie. Bobby Shambless with adult services for 15 years, social worker three. Dina Eddings-Green, our area agency on aging coordinator. And last but not least, William Bill Andrade, 20 years as an eligibility specialist supervisor. Thank you.
Next, we have special districts.
Good morning, Board. Today, we're here to honor and recognize one of our employees, long-term employees, Roberta Castellani. She's been with us for 10 years, and she actually started with the treasurer tax collector's office in 2011 as an extra help employee in helping them through the tax payment season in December through February. Hired full-time on with our department in the following year, 2012, and has been with us ever since. She was an accounting technician when hired. That job classification was then turned into a utility billing specialist, and that's what she does. She's responsible for the account management of over 11,000 sewer accounts. So she tracks and bills all the sewer accounts for us, generates revenue for our department to help keep us afloat. Wonderful portion in the office, very knowledgeable, has a lot of history and understanding of how things work, great to be around, really friendly, and she's, oh, gosh, just a great individual. We are extremely lucky to have her, and just want to thank her for her service.
Next, we have Chair Eddie Crandall to honor our department heads.
All right. So I'll start off with Jonathan Armis, the animal control director. And Jonathan rose through the ranks. This is, he's a younger man, and when he came into the position as animal control director, he has done a lot to bring this department into, he wanted to serve and wanted to do well, and he has done well. I always appreciate his willingness to inform the public. He also is always positive. You know, I just witnessed in a recent meeting with the public that he just, you know, took the questions, even though some frustrated people were making comments, and he just tried to do his best, and always appreciating that. Sometimes, he's understaffed, but he makes it happen and does what he can. So thank you, Jonathan, and if you're here, please come up. Eddie, I should go up there.
Five-year awards are in HR. The five-year awards go to the department directly?
Our next person is Crystal Marketan. She is our social services director. And just knowing, working with Crystal, she has oversight of one of the, you know, one of the biggest departments, and also, it also works with our vulnerable community, and just always, you know, working with emergency response as well, situations when we have power safety shut-offs, emergencies during fires, things of that nature, always willing to help. I also appreciate any time there's a situation with, you know, the seniors, and I have to give you a call, always willing to call back and do what you can. So just wanted to, you know, thank you for that, and congratulations on your five years.
Five-year awards go directly to the department? To the departments, directly.
All right. Next, we have Rich Ford. Rich Ford is our assessor recorder. Always appreciate our discussions. He conducts his trainings with his department quite frequently, always invites us. I'm not sure if we make it, but I know I've made a couple of them, and just always love the discussion with him. He knows in depth, has ideas, is always there, working with his folks, giving them extra cross-training, things like that, always trying to think outside the box, and really appreciate his service and commitment. And it looks like he'll be with us for four more years as well. So, Rich, congratulations. Next is Christopher Veach, 15 years of service, our county librarian. And I just, you know, appreciate, he loves his job. This is a man that loves his job, always thinking of ideas to educate the public and provide that service for them. Whenever we talk or have discussions, he's like, "Well, let's try this, let's try that," and works to get some sort of funding to ensure that his department libraries are always open, even willing to provide cooling centers for, during situations when it's hot and we don't have spaces to go. So just always willing to help, not only that, always looking to find ways to better serve the public in this library. And I do appreciate, we came up with a theme song, he hasn't used it yet, but we had a discussion about that, too. So, Christopher, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Christopher, for your service.
Thank you. Christopher, here you go. All right. Last but not least, our district attorney for 30 years, Susan Cronus. And, you know, I didn't write anything down, because I kind of appreciate the fact that she is an Army veteran as well, and I am, except for she was a captain. I was a non-commissioned officer, but still, Army strong, right? Or be all you can be. I'm not sure where they're at now. But Susan, you know, she'll be with us for four more years as well. Sometimes has situations where she has to do the cases, you know, she doesn't directly have to, she doesn't directly have the privilege to be a complete oversight attorney. She has to take the time and do the work, you know, and help her staff. And so always appreciating that, always appreciating her coming to the public events that we have and working with the public and doing what she can. And so it looks also like she'll be here for four more years as well. So Susan, thank you very much for your service, and congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you for your service.
As always, I have to be in court in a few minutes.
So I think that concludes everyone. So again, thank you all for your service. We appreciate the work you do. To be committed the way you are is what holds this county up. It keeps us strong, and we're hoping to get more people like you to do the work that we need to get done in order for this, you know, this to keep moving on, and, you know. So I think we're in a good space. We appreciate employees like you, and so thank you again. So we're at 9:46. Yeah, you want to take one? We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break and come back at 9:55. All right. I have a couple others. All right, welcome back. Welcome back from our break. It's looking like we're moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is our 6.3, public hearing, consideration of proposed rezone, RZ 22-02, and negative declaration, initial study 22-19, applicant Daniel Sosa, project location 3774 and 3794, East Highway 20, Niece, APN 032, 181, 02, and 03. And 03. Okay, so with that, I'll give the floor to Director Maria Turner.
Thank you. If it pleases the board, we'd like to request a continuance of this item to October 18th meeting. At the last moment, we realized that our ordinance was not in the correct format, and our motions are not exactly as they should be, and we'd really like this item to go smoothly since it's a very straightforward project.
All right. Are we okay with that? Do we have a good time, or is there a time certain or anything like that, or we'll just to be determined for now? All right. Do you, do you think the same time would be great, 10:00, 10:00 AM?
If it's an open time slot, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right. So thank you for that. What I'll do is, I still need to open it up to the public just in case, and we'll see if there's, I don't think anyone from the board has a comment. So I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody on the public here on this item? And I'll look on Zoom and... Okay, come on up, sir.
Hi, my name is Daniel Sosa. I am the applicant. Just, I thought the item was going to happen today, but that's okay. And just, since I'm here, I just wanted to just introduce myself and let you guys know that, you know, the rezone is for the purpose of eventually opening a cannabis dispensary there. And I look forward to opening a really well-operated, clean business that is an economic positive impact in the neighborhood. And, and I have a lot of experience in doing it, several years operating dispensaries. So I just wanted to say, I look forward to it, and I'll see you guys on the 18th for the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And from what I understand, it's, the item on the agenda is solely for a rezone, and it hasn't, we're not deciding on a dispensary or anything of that nature. It will go through the common practice of a use permit and whatnot at a further date. We are only solely dealing with the rezone. And so I'll close public input, bring it back to the board, and I see Ms. Grant has something to state.
Just a suggestion, Mr. Chair, because you do want to avoid having the cost of republication, again, if you could do the continuance by motion.
Okay, sounds good. Is there, can I entertain a motion to continue to October 18th at 10:30 or 10:00 AM?
So moved.
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second. Actually, let's see, we have a panelist, I think. Johanna, Johanna, would you like to unmute?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
We have assessment appeals at 10 on the 18th.
Oh, let's, what is a better time would you prefer, or not prefer, but what do you think would be a better time? For that agenda purpose, if that makes sense.
You could do 10:30.
Okay, we'll do, does 10:30 sound amenable? Would that be for community development as well? Okay. So just maybe adjust that motion to 10:30 as opposed to 10, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Johanna.
I amend my motion to 10:30.
Okay. Second. And I do have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. And so we will address that item October 18th at 10:30 AM. All right. With that, so there's no more timed items today. We will move on to, let's, let's take care of 7.3 briefly. Consideration of the following advisory board appointments, Hartley Cemetery, and it looks like we have Larry Caravario, Larry Caravario. And so that's in my district. Of course, it's a reapportment. Don't know if anyone has a comment. I don't have one. Open it up to the public briefly to see if there's anyone that has a comment on this, and not seeing anyone. Bring it back to the board. I'm not seeing any on Zoom. seeing any on Zoom. And so we'll go ahead and entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chair, I move to, I move to approve the reappointment of Larry Caravario to the Hartley Cemetery.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. We'll move on to 7.2, which is Consideration of Appointments of a Director and Alternate to the California State Association of Counties' Board of Directors for 2023. Let's see here. Susan, would you like to take this one and introduce it?
Thank you, Chair. This is an annual exercise by this board to appoint to the CSAC as a board representative and an alternative, an alternate for 2022 through 2023. Are there any nominations?
And so commonly, I think, right now, you're the current, Supervisor Sabatier is the current primary. And so.
And Supervisor Scott used to be the alternate. At this point, there's only one person in there. I'm definitely volunteer to continue unless somebody else wants to take that over. But I don't know, do we have to have an alternate right now? Do we, is that a must?
It's not a must, just recommended.
Okay.
I'll be the alternate.
Excellent. So we.
I would agree with that, especially with the work we've got going on. So, yes.
All right. I think we have what we need there. So is there any comments from the public on this? Not hearing any. I'll look online and see if there's anybody from the public that would like to comment. And not seeing anyone on Zoom as well. So I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Do we need to do two separate or can I do one motion on this?
You can do one motion here.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Representatives Sabatier and Paeska as Director. Let's see, I'll get it right here. I move to appoint Supervisor Sabatier as their Director and Supervisor Paeska as alternate to CSAC Board of Directors for 22, 2023.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. I will read 7.4, but I can tell, I already know it's going to be polled until October 4th. But Consideration of Resolution Authorizing Applicant, Application for Grant Funding Under the Regional Climate.
Can, can we just move this to after lunch?
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay. And so let's see, let's see what we have here. All right. So let's move on to 7.6. Well, no, no, let's do that at 10:30 if we can. How about Consideration of Resolution of Intention to the Lake County Board of Supervisors to Initiate an Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance Relating to Appeals. And so with that, let me, it's downloading. And so Supervisor Sabatier, if you'd like to, it has your name as the, but is this Anita's? No? Okay.
So as, as I heard that, I realized that it's a resolution of intention from the Lake County Board of Supervisors, not to the Lake County Board of Supervisors. Hopefully, Ms. Grant will still allow us to be able to move forward with that. Okay. A long time ago, a long time ago, over the course of the four years, we've had a few appeals. And a lot of times we get like a hundred-page document dropped on us at 8:30 in the morning or maybe less than 24 hours left. And we've had the discussion in, are we supposed to take this into consideration? What do we do with it? And typically what happens is we delay our process. So one of the things I wanted to make sure is catch up on some of the things that we kind of said that we wanted to see coming back to the board. Here, as you see in my resolution of intent, this is going to the Planning Commission because this would also change their appeal process. So I want to make sure that they have a, a ability to provide feedback on these changes rather than just forcing the changes onto them. And then it would come back to us with their recommendation. What I'm recommending is putting a 96-hour time limit. That way we can make sure the public is aware of what this documentary evidence is. We have the chance to digest this documentary evidence. And that way everyone can come prepared for the appeal process and be able to go through the process and hopefully to have a conclusion. This doesn't prohibit anyone from coming up to the microphone and providing any other information, just like we have at the last, we don't get testimonies ahead of times from the public who come and speak up during these appeal processes. So this doesn't prohibit people's right to speech, but it does allow us to be a little bit more transparent and a little better prepared than some of the circumstances that we've had in the past. And so I wanted to bring this back to see if the board is still interested in moving forward. And again, moving forward would mean submitting this to the Planning Commission and then coming back to us for a final decision.
All right. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah. So, you know, obviously I think it's, it's a good change. Been a part of that, just as you've said, over the last six years. We're trying to keep projects moving forward. And, you know, I think, I think it's a good change. And I completely support having it, approving it today to be sent back to the Planning Commission for review and bringing it back to the board for hopefully approval. I think it helps both sides. You know, hundreds of page documents that you get before something, especially on, even if it's a small project, projects we want to move forward to help our county be better. I just think it's a great opportunity for us to continue the process for our constituents and our public. So good job Supervisor Sabatier. Thank you for bringing it back.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'll open it up for the public. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to comment on item 7.5.
Don Van Pelt, Lake County resident. I have to say, on the appeal process, to put a timeframe of four days, 96 hours, when the citizens of Lake County don't get the appeal until Friday afternoon, is putting a time restraint on people trying to get their paperwork ahead of time to do that. Now, I'm not opposed to a 96-hour time limit. Maybe the supervisors need to post their things a little sooner than Friday afternoon so people have time to react to it, is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Joan Moss. I wanted to file an appeal. I could not afford to. And I had some good points. It was an illegal hydrology study. I did file a drought complaint, which is still in the works. And the property has been, half of it has been sold since then. And the fact that it was sold isn't registered up on the county. So I'm still working on it. I'm a fighter, especially when my own land is threatened. So I think there's more than a timeframe that needs to be adjusted. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Any, any other comments from anyone in the chambers? Seeing none. I will look towards Zoom. I'm not seeing any hands up for this item. I'll wait a couple seconds. Bring it back to the board for further discussion or action. And I'd just go ahead and like to say that I know there's some folks that I've had the same discussion with about having a further extensive opportunity to look through the document. So I really feel this is, this is going to help as well for that. So I appreciate the work on this. So I don't know if there's any other comments, but.
I will comment at least on the question about the timeline. Again, this doesn't prohibit anyone from bringing testimony or speaking up during our appeal process. This is more along the lines of those who are involved in the appeal process, those are the ones who have been historically submitting to us those big packets of evidence. They know when the appeal is coming. And having a 96-hour allows us, who have a 72-hour deadline to post our agenda, to be able to take in that document and then make sure that it's part of the attachment. So again, I think it increases the transparency level of the process.
For, for the public, to also see what's been submitted.
Exactly. For the public and for us to be able to digest the information and be able to put it into context of the appeal that we're dealing with.
Right. I, I think what's been missing is, is that transparency with the public. So having that within the window to post the agenda, I think is appropriate.
All right. Ms. Grant?
I, I just did want to clarify that, keep in mind that when your board receives documentation, the public's entitled to receive it too. So.
All right. Thank you.
And if there's no further discussion, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. It looks like that, that, that item can move forward to this, to the next stage. With that, we'll move on to, how, how about 7.8? How does that look?
Hidden 7.8?
Yeah. Well, the second 7.7. Supervisor Paeska, do you, do you think that would be?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's county council's item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Anita. So this, this item, I'll read it off. I didn't even read it off. I'm just, Consideration of Retention of Specialized Legal Services to Address PG&E's Wildfire Mitigation Activities. And this will be, this will be presented by County Council Anita Grant.
Yes. Thank you, Board. Referencing Supervisor Paeska is certainly appropriate here because it was through her diligence that we became aware of Ms. Samanji and her expertise in the area of taking PG&E to task for some of its decisions with regard to not only power safety shut-offs, but certainly when it comes to felled trees. So this matter is before you today to offer as a, a tool for the county, Ms. Samanji's expertise. You'll see her retention letter as attached. The summary of her experience is provided in the memo to your board. Certainly, the level of her expertise is, is likely unmatched in most parts of California when it comes to taking on PG&E. And I would foresee that she would probably be working, at least at this juncture, in most, more of a consultant capacity in moving forward. The, there is also, I hope, and this, this may be something your board wishes to, to consider, the opportunity for multiple counties who are undergoing the same issues with regard to felled trees and lack of responsiveness on some occasions from PG&E to join together to retain Ms. Samanji for issues going forward. And so it's presented with, with that thought in mind. The Administrative Office has identified a funding source for this, for your board to, to move forward if you wish to do so. So I'll, I'll turn it over now to the CAO.
Yes, we've identified in the Admin Office a consultant line. We recommend an amount not to exceed 50K at this time.
Vice Chair Paeska?
So in my conversations with other supervisors from other counties about PG&E's vegetation work and also the fast rip outages and PSPS outages, that's how I came to meet Megan Samanji and actually attended an RCRC forum with the CPUC president, where counties were telling their stories about the outages and how impactful they are to our communities. So the other counties have already engaged her. And because as our county council has said, she is one of the leading forces and experts in, in dealing with, with PG&E and CPUC. So I agree that a $50,000 limit is appropriate now. And I'm hoping that we can join some of the other regional groups that are, have already signed on with her. And we're just going to see how the relation, explore the relationship as we immediately talk about PG&E and the tree work as, you know, going back to the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, you know, expanding the area where they're going to be doing tree removal and looking at that as it impacts the entire county.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I have a question about the other counties. What has come out of there? Or is it too soon to be able to tell?
No, they, so Napa, Marin, Sonoma, and sometimes Mendocino have been using her with PSPS issues and the fast rip outages. And also Napa engaged her after their wine country fires to deal with cleanup issues with PG&E and hold them accountable for removing like 900,000 trees, something like that. So that, that's how I came to learn about her work, through those supervisors and their experience and the success rate that they achieved.
And, and I know that some of the issues is the current tree trimming that's going on and the lack of being cleaning up. I know that there's some historical issues. When I reviewed the September 13th video, because I wasn't here for that one, of years past, do you think that it can help with the historical stuff that still exists that hasn't been cleaned up? Or is it only for ongoing new stuff?
Well, that's what we'll ask her for help with because we do have quite a lot of things that are laying around and haven't been cleaned up since before last winter when they agreed to do that wood haul. They only did it, they started the end of February and then they paused it in August and are restarting. So there's significant work that's happened, but also they're only doing the wood haul in the circle around the Cobe area. And, and as all of us know, we're experiencing tree mortality throughout the county. So we do need this assistance.
So I, I will say that there definitely is some on and off because I know that there is wood hauling happening in the Clear Lake area, but it's definitely not to say it's happening all the time. And I know typically they say four inches or less is what they do haul.
That, that number changes a lot, too.
And I've heard 10 inches during the meeting that happened on the 13th. One of the things that I'd like to suggest, if I'm going to say yes to this, is I think we have policies that we can create to help the future of this. Whether that's holding PG&E accountable, maybe through some sort of code enforcement ordinance or something along those lines, or whether it's what people can put underneath the lines. Because yes, I know there's undergrounding that's happening, but there's so many miles of wires, it's going to take a long time to get there. But right now, if I wanted to plant a tree underneath the power lines, I could. And eventually it becomes an issue. And so who has to cut it and who's responsible for it? Maybe we need to look at some of those things to help keep our wires clear and also maybe have an open door for us to hold them accountable through our code enforcement. So I'd like to look at what policies we can look at as well as doing that.
I think that's a separate item. This is just engaging legal counsel.
And I'm saying in the, in the future, I would like to look, I don't want to talk specific policy like today.
Well, maybe bring that as a separate item, but let's just keep the focus on this letter of engagement with this legal counsel.
Those were my statements.
Okay.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. You know, obviously, you know, PG&E is something we're going to be dealing with all the time. I know that we do have communications. I know that obviously they can do better. They sat right here and said that. And bringing back the tree program and some of the other things. I would always look at, you know, I hear Supervisor Sabatier saying this a lot, making sure that we're, you know, we're spending our taxpayer dollars in the right way. And I just, I want to make sure that we just don't sign an agreement and say, well, this could help with anything. Really would, would like to request that we have a meeting. If we're going to engage this, we get it started, that we have that conversation with or as a board. You know, I don't know if that's an open session item, a closed session item. Open session item. It sounds like that we continue that conversation to really look at it because, you know, just saying $50,000 to pay this individual, you know, help us with PG&E issues. I know we each and all deal with them directly for our districts to help to do that. So would definitely like to have that follow-up conversation if we're going to move forward with this today.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because this is just the letter of engagement. But what we ask for, for this work, I think we should all agree on and develop that strategy so we have it moving forward together.
Because ultimately what we're looking to do is just protect our community.
Yes.
You know, as the utility is growing. And I completely agree with some of that idea with us and, and as we're expanding this system because we're not in control of that. Obviously, if someone wants to put in a big development and has to have four new poles brought in to get that development created, understanding what that is. And I think there are some things that could be done with each development as we move forward. So I think your discussion is very pertinent on how we expand this system. And maybe it's, that expansion's all underground now. So that might be the conversation. If you want to build something, it's got to be underground and figure out that partnership. So I know Anita, you have some comments, so I'm going to.
Thank you, sir. I, I think that one of the things I should mention here is that this law for Ms. Samanji is. part of, is looking to ensure that there is no pre-existing conflict issue. That effort is ongoing, and there still needs to be a discussion, which we're trying to arrange for tomorrow. So if your board is interested in moving forward with this, then you can simply indicate that today, and this can come back. I would suggest that there be a clear scope of work, and I can inquire of Ms. Samanji if she's available. She can appear via Zoom to answer questions of your board as you consider that. The other part of this I would suggest is that there are certain controls with regard to contact, because Ms. Samanji is a laborer worthy of her hire, so you've seen her hourly and that of the second, who would work? When you combine those efforts, that is a significant amount of legal fees, and many, many questions from multiple people will expend that 50,000 well before you're prepared to have it be exhausted. So there are other additional controls. Your board may want to just indicate today by consensus that you're agreeable to go forward. We can clear the conflict. I don't anticipate any problem in that at all, but Ms. Samanji's firm is diligent and should be so to ensure that there's not an issue. So we'll have that cleared hopefully by tomorrow. And if it comes back next Tuesday with a scope of work, and if Ms. Samanji is available to answer questions of your board, once you review it, you can certainly change it or add to it any way you like, and that can be in an open session of the board.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I know this throws a wrench in it, but with PG&E being such a hot topic for the last five or more years, when this comes back to us, which, yes, absolutely, the scope of service needs to be very specific as to what the requirements are and maybe even goals and objectives and criteria to meet. But are we looking at, the way that we're going about this, we're looking at waiving the bidding process? I'm sure there's a lot of lawyers out there that do this.
This comes under the consultant selection process, legal services or specialized services and expressly exempt.
Okay. Thank you for that answer.
All right. I'm not seeing any other comments from the board. I'll open it up to the public for this item. Come on up and state your name for the record, and we'll start in three minutes.
I live on Wildcat Road. I cry when I drive down. I want you to know, I want to know what funding source is going to be used for this, because you're mentioning a funding source, but you're not saying what the source is.
We just, it's from the administration's budget from the contract, contracting line.
Consultant line. What is it again?
Consultant line, where that's.
You have a fund just for consulting?
A lot of different departments do, yes.
Okay, is that under the county budget?
I will let CIO answer.
Yes, it is.
I want to suggest that there is a communication problem with PG&E, and I want to suggest that there is a communication with Ms. Pyska. I wrote a letter April 15th. She finally got it a month ago, and she responded right away when I had a question. So I am on in-between. I am in-between citizens who want to go after Ms. Pyska. I want to go after PG&E and improve nature. Nature needs improvement. $450 an hour is quite a bit to spend with someone who won't even go to court. It says in the material that she will not go to court. And I'm asking Ms. Pyska and you people, instead of just communicating with each other, to communicate with the neighbors on Wildcat Road who are unhappy and who are suffering. And I always get nervous when I get up here, but I want to know if, and I'm not going to do this myself, but if the neighbors file a claim against Lake County about this mitigation and PG&E, is this consultant going to defend Lake County or going to be sympathetic with the neighbors and the suffer, people who are suffering? This one woman is suffering, she said that they took 600 trees off of this elder's property. Now, that's an exaggeration. I called the fellow up. They didn't take 600 trees off of his property. But there are people that are that unhappy that are going to do something. And I want to know if this consultant is only going to help Lake County and go after PG&E, or if this consultant is going to help the people whose trees are gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. And so.
And laying around.
Ms. Grant, would you like to comment briefly before we let the vice chair comment?
The county can't act on behalf of private individuals, so no one the county retains can do that, because it's a gift of public funds under the Constitution. Hopefully, the big picture is going to be a benefit to everyone who lives here, because there can be an incidental private benefit. It just can't be the primary purpose. And Ms. Samanji is hired, she will not be responding to claims, because that's a precursor to litigation. The county has, for the last 30 years, had a third-party administrator for that who will respond. And trust me, while there are claims and actions where one's heart may break, as your boards may, when you're sitting in your quasi-judicial capacity, that is not the touchstone for decision-making under the law.
Thank you for that. And Supervisor Pyska?
So I've only received two calls, one from Ms. Moss, another from another woman who is making complaints on other, about other people's property. So, you know, these complaints are with PG&E, but I'm happy to forward complaints on, once I get them, as I did with Ms. Moss's complaint. So I, you know, I hear every week when you say that there's all these people that are so upset, yet they're not contacting me, except for one other individual. And that individual didn't have a complaint on her own property, so there wasn't anything I could do to help. This is PG&E's work, it is their responsibility, but I often do forward complaints for property owners if they feel like they're not being heard.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just want to remind Ms. Moss, just as Supervisor Pyska said, this is a privately-owned utility. We work, you know, with PG&E to hopefully just bring those complaints forward and to bring that message from our community. We constantly do that, whether it's through our advisory councils that we have. PG&E is routinely asked to come to Math. I know they go to Cauverya Council, and most likely attended your three advisory councils to get that message out there, not only just to talk about the utilities, but the undergrounding work that's happening, many other issues that go on. So it's communication. We don't just talk amongst ourselves. These are complaints that we get from our constituents, and we forward those on. I think this is just a continuing conversation of the frustration of the, you know, the leftover dead trees that are constantly cut out and left in our community. So we had that, it was brought here by Supervisor Pyska, right here at this board on the 13th. We had the discussions, they re-initiated a program, and I know everybody is either on one side of keep the trees or have them removed, and it's a hard conversation. But we'll continue to be that conduit to help our constituents get the message forward to this private utility. And we know there are issues, so this is just a continuing conversation with this engagement letter if we're going to move forward as a board. So hopefully, it's bringing those messages forward, exactly what you're asking for, Joan, communicating with our constituents as they're dealing with these issues.
All right. Any other, go ahead Supervisor, yeah, any other public comment from this item, for this item? I'm not seeing any on Zoom as well, and so I'll wait a couple of seconds, because I always don't, and then I close it, and then some hand comes up. All right, so I will close public input at this time, bring it back to the board for Supervisor Sabatier.
Obviously, one of the board's goals is safety. We've dealt with enough fires. We don't want to create more fuel or allow more fuel to sit around, so we need to deal with this. I, too, have concerns about the $450 an hour, that is extremely high. And I also don't know that we've tried everything available to us before jumping to that. However, this is just saying, yes, let's go ahead and look at a draft agreement to see what that looks like. And so today, I'm going to be voting yes to let's move forward, and let's take a look at that, and let's continue the discussion.
All right. There's no other comments? Do we just, the consensus to move forward is all we need?
Well, I'd like to, if we're going to be developing the scope of work for next time, we could ask her about the groups, the county groups that have been formed for the outages, and if there's a way for us to join that as a cost savings rather than do it on our own. That's directly related to the fast trip outages and the PSPSs. And that's the conversation that's happening with RCRC and the CPUC. And so if there are groups that are formed, and there's a cost savings for us to get in on that, because it was, you know, I was told by RCRC, you're not part of these groups? Why aren't you part of these groups? So, you know, I think, I think that's going to be a benefit to all of us living in these rural communities. We're just getting into our high wind weather. We're going to see more and more outages in September, October, hopefully not November. So if we could look at that as part of the scope, too, I think that would be beneficial.
Ms. Grant?
If your board agrees, I can certainly contact Ms. Samanji. I don't know what her schedule is like this week, so I can't promise the time over response. She's very responsive, but obviously, it depends upon what else is going on. And get an idea then if the plan would be to simply attempt to join the groups that are dealing with the PSPSs, then this would be essentially an agreement to work with PG&E to address the felled trees or trees to be felled that have been felled, and how PG&E is going to work. There are certain funds that PG&E has already set aside for these plans, so it's not as if there isn't money in certain pockets of PG&E, if you will.
All right.
And we can bring that back. And then if Ms. Samanji is available for this next Tuesday, may I ask if she's not available for this Tuesday, but the next, would that be all right for your board?
I think we have a holiday.
The 17th, if it's not the 18th? So if not the 4th, the 18th?
Yes.
Okay, she may need more lead time, obviously, than that.
Sure.
So then all we need is consensus or would a motion maybe needed on this?
Yes, you're just instructing me at this point, so consensus is fine.
All right. With that, it looks like no further discussion on this is needed, so we can close this item and move forward on our agenda. With that, we'll move on to our 7.6, which is consideration of resolution of intention of the Lake County Board of Supervisors to initiate the following amendments. An amendment to Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code relating to permitting ag-exempt and temporary ag structures. An amendment to Chapter 27 of the Lake County Code regarding mitigation fees. And an amendment to Article 68 of the zoning ordinance regarding definitions of temporary building types. And with that, Supervisor Sabatier, I know you brought this to the agenda, so I'll let you go ahead and introduce.
So I want to thank first folks that I met with and had discussions with, that started with our previous Director of Community Development and continued on with Director Turner, met with Air Quality District, met with, and of course, some staff from Community Development, including our Chief Building Inspector, met with our Ag Commissioner, met with the Farm Bureau, met with the Cannabis Alliance, and met with Fire Protection District, Lake County Fire Protection District as well, to discuss these new changes. My attempts was to get this to the board a whole lot earlier, so that there would be the ability to look at getting some of these structures for harvest season. I failed to make that happen in a timely fashion, but rather than wasting the work that I did, I thought I would still bring it to the board. And again, the idea today is only to move this forward so that the Ag Advisory Board, which is important to have a review of this, since we're looking at changing some of the ag-exempt language, and also the Cannabis Task Force can review that, provide that feedback and recommendations back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has the ability to make their changes and their recommendations, which then comes back to us. So today is just step one for all the work that's been done for a couple of months. So the purpose is to provide hemp and cannabis ability to drive. We've been through some of these issues where there is a gridlock for something that is providing us some decent tax dollars, yet we don't have everything available for them to be able to accomplish from planting a seed all the way to the end, without going through, what I would suggest is outside of the scope of what ag should have to deal with. They shouldn't have to go through, the problem is no approved access to ag-exempt buildings or temporary buildings. Agricultural operation is solely forced to go through the building permit process similar to that of a house. In the state of California, I will show later, it is ag, and so why are we not giving them that option to be able to follow what other ag operations do? In the state for ag-exempt buildings, it states, "A structure designed and constructed to house farm implements, hay, grain, poultry, livestock, or other horticulture products. This structure shall not be a place of human habitation or a place of employment where agricultural products are processed, treated, or packaged, nor shall it be a place used by the public." Basically, you can walk in there and store stuff, put stuff away, but then it's not a place you can hang out in, no break rooms, no nothing like that in there. USDA identifies horticulture as "that branch of agriculture concerned with growing plants that are used by people for food, for medicinal purposes, and for aesthetic gratification." California State Law and Business and Professions Code, Division 10, Chapter 6, Licensed Cultivation Sites, 26060A1, for the purposes of this division, cannabis is an agricultural product. When you move on to, this is our current code for exempt structures, there are, there's only one restriction, and that is that you need to have at least 10 acres. Other than that, it talks about you need to submit a plot plan to show what other buildings are around, where you're going to be locating the building, and that you have to have authorization from the property owner and confirm that the proposed structure is for bona fide agricultural use. Basically, I know in the past, when looking into ag-exempt, you can only request for an ag-exempt building once agricultural operations have begun. You can't have it as a prospective activity in the future, so that we don't get a whole bunch of ag-exempt barns or buildings put up that eventually do not get used. And then the last part that was on there was just if you're in the FEMA flood, you still need to follow the standard practices of reviewing those things and making sure your agricultural building is going to be safe. That was the limits of our ag-exempt code. When looking at all the different counties all around us, and I hope this isn't taken in a wrong way, I looked for the most country area of California, and I keep thinking of my friend Ned Coe up in Modock County, and they have a lot of limitations on what ag-exempt, including that they all, they go all the way down to one acre, not 10 acres, but you're limited to 800 square feet. You're limited to height, you have setbacks and all of those things. We are in an era where safety is definitely something to think of, and I'm sure farmers think of safety, but we have no regulations, which mean if somebody wanted to put it right on the property line, they could. If somebody wanted to put it right next to a house, they could. There was no limitations that we had within our ordinance to make it so. And because I wanted to add something, another industry to be able to have access to ag-exempt buildings, I wanted to review the ag-exempt code. And so here's the proposal. It would allow cannabis operations to apply, because the state says that they are agricultural products, that cannabis is an agricultural product. It would add setback restrictions from both buildings and property lines. It would add height and size restrictions of the buildings, fire safety standards for the number of exits and distance between the exits, codify electricity and plumbing addition to buildings. There's been a lot of interpretation of, well, it doesn't say in our ag-exempt code that you can add plumbing or you can add electricity. Some people. Some people do have electricity and plumbing. So obviously, in the past, it's been allowed or been approved, but currently, it does not appear that the interpretation is that it is allowed or can be approved. So why not codify that and put it in there and explain exactly what are the abilities of electricity and plumbing in these buildings? And also offering to do a new minimum acre parcel from 10 acres to 5 acres. For temporary ag structures, again, same basic concepts, setback restrictions, height and size restriction, fire safety standards for number of exits and distance between them, and allow approved cannabis operations to apply. And for the different type of temporary ag structures, hoop houses, I know that CDD had been working on a hoop house addition, and so they provided that to me in order to add it in here. Hoop houses are defined as what can be used for nurseries or for growing. Doesn't say that it can be used for storage, doesn't say that it can be used for drying or anything like that. Currently, that's the way the definition is in our current code. What we would be adding to the restrictions is no mechanical or electrical or heat-producing equipment in there, no CO2 enrichment. And if you're not using the hoop houses, that they need to be removed. And we talked about that when we did the hoop house stuff over in Big Valley, that we just want to make sure because we know that the elements can be pretty rough on some of the hoop houses. Then for the temporary drying, shipping containers and general-purpose tent, I'm not sure if you've ever seen, for the lack of a better term, like an army tent, very thick canvas, not, a little bit more, much more fireproof than your typical tent that you would think of with metal skeletal framework, used for storage or drying. Generators, I spoke with Air Quality District, and they looked at over the ordinance changes and provided me the exact definition and wording that was needed. As long as you have an air quality district approved generator, that you can go ahead and use one. 60-day minimum for the amount of time that shipping containers and general-purpose tent that are temporary can be there, and no more than two years consecutively. The idea is to get people towards an ag exempt building that is permanent, that looks good, rather than temporary on and off. That is the whole reason for that. Now, for those who want permanent shipping containers, there is already an avenue to make those things happen. I'm also proposing to define general-purpose tent and shipping container. And then in my conversation with the fire districts, they have concerns on they're being called out for things that they're not receiving fire mitigation fees for. And so to me, if we're going to codify electricity in our ag exempt structures, that at this point, I'm looking at the amendment of a fire mitigation fee so that instead of saying that ag buildings that are exempt, ag exempt buildings are exempt from the fire mitigation fees, I reworded it to say agricultural buildings requiring an exempt building permit not connected to, that are not connected to a power source. So basically, if you have no power and you have an ag exempt building, then no mitigation fees. If you have power going to those buildings, then mitigation fees. So here's the feedback that I received. I want to make sure that I'm transparent with the feedback. This is what I put together based on all of the discussions and conversations that I had. The Farm Bureau questions the addition of cannabis access to ag exempt structures. I tried to provide some California code and county code to suggest that it can be. Questions the need for restrictions on an already over-regulated industry. These are things that we're hearing as we're going through ag venture. But at the same time, the restrictions that I am providing for today, I can't say 100%, but my belief, and especially with speaking with Rebecca Harper from the Farm Bureau, that the majority of what already exists as a ag exempt building would still be eligible based on the restrictions that we're looking at right now. Cannabis Alliance, not just cannabis, they want hoop houses for drying. That is one of the concepts that they employ. In speaking with multiple people about this, this is just not something that is, that we're comfortable with offering, but that's something that the Cannabis Alliance is looking for. They also want a larger footprint for the dry sheds because there is limitations on the footprint based on the agricultural operation that you're doing. And the fire districts also spoke of fire mitigation fees for all buildings since all buildings create potential hazards of varying degrees, and all buildings can burn, and we are in a different era. So I want to hope that I provided all of the right feedback that I received. And part of this is, obviously, we're looking at an industry hemp that struggles to have access to these types of dry sheds and things, but also cannabis, which we want to keep here, and we still don't have that, what I believe is the right pathway for them to be able to finish up their harvest in the correct way. We just had an appeal where somebody put up dry sheds, and we weren't able to figure out how to get them approved for any type of dry sheds, and that appeal was approved, and they were not able to continue their operations in the future. I want to make sure we solve that. I want to make sure that we provide the right solution. Maybe this is not the right solution, but this is exactly why. The consideration today is if approved, it goes to the Ag Advisory Board, where the changes and feedback and recommendations can be collected, goes to the Cannabis Task Force, where again, the feedback and recommendations can be collected, sent over to the Planning Commission for final review, and then brought back to us from the Planning Commission for, again, final consideration. And what I'm hopeful is that we can get this back before the end of January so that we can go ahead and make sure that this is codified, and people can start planning to get these things developed and erected so that they can have the right implements and the right equipment to be able to finish their harvest in the right way. And hopefully, that's, that's the summary.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I don't have any at this point. I'd like to hear from the public and the folks that want to speak on this issue as we move forward.
So we'll do that. All right. So go ahead and open it up to the public for public comment. If there's anyone here on behalf of this item, please come up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and we'll give you your time to speak.
Good morning, everybody. Willie Sepeda, Lake County Fire Chief. Our concern in the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association is that every building, whether it be an ag exempt or temporary, poses a threat that we have to respond to, and we discussed a 50% requirement on any building that goes up because it does impact us. And the, our mitigation fees are for facilities and equipment only. You know, you look at a new fire engine, it's three quarters of a million dollars. And so we rely on those funds. My other concern is these temporary tents you were talking about, the military canvass are highly flammable. They have oils and things like that, so they are extremely flammable and pose that hazard. As these buildings get put up, our biggest concern is a Public Resource Code 4290 and 91, access to these facilities, because throughout all of our fire districts, access to these buildings are compromise our ability to get in there with our larger equipment and to be able to provide a safe means of egress when we're evacuating. In the last 10 years, we really don't do fire suppression for an hour into the fire we're evacuating and doing public safety. So it's imperative that we actually have a good means of ingress and egress with turnaround points so that in a lot of these areas, it is thick with brush. And of our crews going in, they need to have what we call a safe refuge area, turn out an area to turn around and to be able to make a defensible stand. But, you know, with these temporary buildings, we still respond to calls for there. And, you know, I have two in my district that were ag buildings that when we seen them putting power, we went back after them. So I know that there's not enough staff to be able to go out and police and make sure they haven't gone from that ag exempt or a temporary to a permanent, but I'm the ones right across in Ellis Ranch, you know, and he's putting electrical in. We stopped by, and it's like he paid his mitigation fees, and it's hard to police those, but it's a definite impact on us for any building that goes in. And the other 50% could be paid when they change that occupancy, or they're going to put the electrical in and those water and those other components that actually make it a more viable change of occupancy per se. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, board. I am Sarah Bodnar, the Policy Director for Lake County Cannabis Alliance. And I just want to start off by saying how crucial this item is and that we're glad it's being discussed today. I know that the board had expressed a desire to handle drying structures as part of a comprehensive ordinance. And since we're not there yet and that's still being developed, like, we're very glad that we're talking about this. There would be a lot more farmers here today, but they're busy farming. And soon, they're going to need a place to process their crops. And once again, we're in that sticky situation where we don't have that in place for the harvest season. So if we had just one request of the board today, it would be that we uncouple the ag exempt structure building from the temporary drying structure authorization. The ag exempt structures ordinance is complex. It's going to require a lot of input and deliberation from traditional farmers and folks beyond cannabis, you know, the fire districts, many different stakeholders are going to need to be part of that process, and that could weigh down our deliberations over temporary drying structures. So we think both are critically important. We need policy and regulations around both. But if we could make one ask of you today, it would be that you recommend that the Cannabis Task Force specifically take up temporary drying structures for cannabis and hemp and not group it all together so that we can move both forward with appropriate stakeholder input. We did have a number of other recommendations. I think that those can be taken up through the Cannabis Task Force, which is designed to get input from the industry as well as other community stakeholders. But with your direction today, we would request that you would separate the two into two different resolutions so that we can move them forward more efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Van Pelt, Lake County resident. I'm glad, Mr. Sabatier, you mentioned the appeal. I was the one that filed the appeal. I was the one that had to listen to the drying sheds for their whole time. I'm glad you went to air quality, but I think there should be some noise mitigation measures. The setbacks aren't enough. I was four tenths of a mile away, and they were well above their nighttime noise decimal levels. There's a whole lot of things, and I understand that they need drying sheds. But where do the citizens come in for their need for drying sheds to the citizens' need for peace and quiet at nighttime hours? There's a whole lot of planning that needs to go on, and just to try and satisfy one group to make another group angry is not the answer either. So I would recommend before passing this ordinance that we go back to air quality, get some mitigation measures for noise, not only diesel particulate pollution, which you did, and thank you for that, but noise. These fans are large. They make a lot of noise. And I know some of you witnessed it, saw it, heard it, but together as a group, to activate something now because they need it is not the answer to make other parts of the group suffer. Thank you.
Paul Duncan, South Lake County Fire, Cal Fire, North Division Operations. Safety knows no bounds with this ordinance. We are required to respond to these calls when these drying sheds, these temporary structures catch on fire, or there's a medical call there. So any variance on the road safety, I just can't stand by and watch it happen. We need to be able to get fire trucks in there. There's an expectation of that. We need to be able to get ambulances into these locations. So the road standard is what it is for the safety of not just those people out there working in those temporary structures, even though they say there's no occupancy. If work is being done inside a drying shed with clipping and trimming, that is an occupied structure. So those calls for service happen irregardless, or regardless of whether there is a means to get out there. So oftentimes, we are forced to have other measures to get resources out to those calls. So I want to just reinforce the fact that it's a safety item for us and also safety for the community, because fires start in those locations, and us being able to access those quickly and extinguish them is very important. I'll speak on the district side. We are out several hundred thousands of dollars for mitigation fees that are not collected on these structures. So there is a level of frustration with that, that we keep putting a Band-Aid on the problem and not fixing it with mitigation. And as Chief Sepeda said, a new fire engine, $750,000. A new ambulance is $300,000. All this equipment costs money, as does the staffing. So by not supplying the mitigation, it really does affect our ability to respond to these calls, and they're, and the public expects that we're going to be able to go out there. So nobody goes into these buildings thinking there won't be a fire response out there. It's without a doubt, we will respond, but just make it safe for those that are out there and for the responders that are on the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Morning. Michael Green, already submitted an e-comment, strong support. This is just the resolution of intent. This starts the ball rolling. This kicks the can down the road to the task forces, ultimately to the Planning Commission. And as I asked in the comment, let's set them free. Let's let them kick the tires really, really hard. There are some issues that were raised here today that they may want to address. But it's striking to me that we're here. This is such a long overdue discussion. Here we are, years down. We shouldn't have to be parsing this at this late date, and yet here we are. Part of that is the complexity of the building structures that are available now, the ebb and flow of cultivation practices, not just in cannabis and hemp land, but in ag as general. The fire road standards keep coming up, and I want to be very... Wow, that's a fast three minutes. I want to be sensitive of that because I know it's a complicated issue, and, but it strikes me that this really hearkens back to some of the land use decisions that were made six years ago when the original ordinance was done. And when we're popping up structures out in the hills and the rural residential and the rural lands, and we don't have access, we have fire chiefs saying we need to get in there and all that. We have a subdivision proposed in the west side of a west side park in the city of Lakeport, and I can't get, and I can't give away, an emergency vehicle access to that project. It's ironic to me. So I think part of it is the original land use decision that was made several years ago that pushed cannabis and hemp development out into the hinterlands. If these same projects are coming into our established farmlands, we would have built environments. We would have drying sheds. We would have fire road access already established, and we wouldn't be trying to reinvent the wheel out in the hinterlands. That's not before you today, but I do think we'll come back and talk about land use in the future, hopefully. But in this, we're just asking to give some clarity, some definitions to the structures that are already being used. We're trying to give access to cannabis and hemp to agricultural operations that are allowed under state law and are not quite clear under the county ordinance at this point. So this is very important work. It is somewhat technical. I think some of these issues can be parsed off. I think fire road access, we'll be taking a look at that from time to time again. But I think where there's a will, there's a way. And I think this board should have the will to plow through this, pass this resolution of intent, let the committees and the Planning Commission give their good input, and I think you'll have a really good result when it comes back to you in January. Thank you.
Anyone else in the chambers? I have some on Zoom. We'll start with the top. Lori Pascarella. I see that if you can unmute and state your name for the record, we'll go ahead and hear your statement.
Thank you. My name is Lori Pascarella, and I'm a compliance specialist in the cannabis industry, working with some Lake County cultivators and others in Tsunama County. The ag exempt amendment, as it's currently written, does not go nearly far enough. Additional considerations should be taken by this board for changes to the amendment to best help the Lake County cannabis industry to compete and to be able to remain in compliance. Drying and curing cannabis crop is absolutely critical to cannabis quality. This county must allow for temporary drying structures as a function of cannabis cultivation for the county industry to compete. And this Board of Supervisors must turn temporary drying tents or sheds into an urgency resolution separate from this ag exempt structure amendment because this year's crop is at stake. Fire mitigation fees should be required for all building permit fees, including ag exempt and temporary structures, in order to support the fire emergency response in the region. This is something that we as an industry absolutely are willing to do and believe that it's necessary. So there should be no questions on that. Hoop houses, these are critical to protecting crops. They protect them from excess UV radiation. They protect them from excess UV radiation, crop drift from other spray, dust, other things. So this amendment should be updated to read that the framing should be in order to include metal, PVC, or other similar tubing, which allows for more sustainable options, just other than restricting to plastic tubing. These structures are, you know, they can be done in a really good, clean, fire-safe, sustainable manner, and the ordinance needs to just allow for that. Climate control and cannabis storage structures is absolutely necessary to preserve the quality and to create a more marketable product in a very highly competitive market. This amendment should be changed to read that mechanical installations should be allowed in ag exempt structures and drying structures with a permit and prior approval of the community development director and with associated fire mitigation fees. And then limiting operations to 100 amps of power does not allow enough power for all cultivator's operations needs. Power should be based upon the given site's operational needs and approval of permitting and inspection. And since PG is historically slow at providing services, a generator use should be allowed during the entire interim period that a cultivator is waiting for PG&E service. This is critical to be able to, you know, operate a water pump or run a camera system, just minimal things. And also, you know, this county needs to look at the fact that California legislators are currently looking to update cannabis regulations to allow for light deprivation on outdoor cultivation. And so this amendment should also allow for low voltage mechanical systems with a permit and prior approval of the community development director. These are all things that are necessary to make the Lake County cannabis industry competitive with the rest of the state.
Wrap up. Your three minutes is expended. So if you can wrap it up, please.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time and all of your work in developing these amendments that will help your county and industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ron. If you can unmute and please state your name for the record, and we can hear your statement.
Good morning, supervisor. My name is Ron Ferraro. I represent Bango Distribution, Eleon Cannabis, a vertically integrated company that cultivates, processes, and distributes cannabis statewide, including Lake County. I'm proud to say Eleon ranks as one of the top best sold brands in the state of California. I'd like to start off with first thanking you all to take a look at time to put together these amendments in regards to ag exempt structures support cannabis cultivators. However, I'd like to raise up a couple of points for your consideration, beginning with the ag exempt structures. A structure that is meant to hold cannabis cannot be climate controlled to a certain extent does not suffice for proper cannabis storage. I would recommend that this amendment be changed to read that all mechanical installations shall receive prior approval of community development director. Additionally, 100 amps is not enough to service a 15,000 square foot building. If permits and inspections are required at electrical installations, I don't see a need to limit 100 amps. Moving on to hoop houses, I think the language similar tubing is extremely vague. Suggestions to use PVC. In my cultivation sites and other jurisdictions, I have moved completely away from PVC and used metal tubing to construct our hoop houses. PVC is non-UV rated plastic that is meant to be buried and hold water pressure, doesn't last long in the sun, and especially under pressure of being bent like a hoop. PVC pipes used in this fashion tend to splinter and crack, and with no safe way to secure plastic to these without the use of wood framing and puncturing the plastic membranes that become hazardous on the heavy wind loads. Metal frame hoops will allow for much cleaner sites and sustainable operations. They can easily be removed each year and reused the following year. Reuse of plastic membranes reduces plastic waste. Additionally, with the state looking into updating cannabis regulations to allow for light deprivation on outdoor licenses, I recommend allowing low voltage mechanical systems with prior approval by the community developer director. These types of systems will allow cannabis operators to operate at a much efficient cost and have the opportunity to actually compete in this very highly competitive California market, which I believe Lake County is one of the most ideal locations in this whole state, and I've had farms all over the state. Thank you for your time and your work in developing these amendments. Respectfully, Ron Ferraro. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have phone 6205. If you can unmute, state your name for the record, and we'll hear your question.
Hi, this is Bart Levinson, and I feel pretty nervous about this. I'm going to speak as a citizen who attends your meetings, attends the task force meetings, and attends the planning commission meetings, and is pretty familiar at this point with the staffing shortages in the county. We all know that the community development department code enforcement are working at their limit currently. So it doesn't seem to me appropriate to allow the industry to come in and pressure the county to do something that the industry started on their own to grow here, knowing the conditions that were here. The way that the industry comes to in front of you and cites that their whole existence is threatened unless you act immediately is bullying. And from a citizen's point of view, it's not okay to have the fire chiefs come before you today, the fire chiefs who have saved us from catastrophic fire this year. Those people, we must listen to them. Over and over again, we see commercial grows adding 40 to 80 trucks delivery per day to roads that don't have shoulders, roads that are essential evacuation routes, roads that weren't designed for industrial use. I appreciate that Lake County wants to grow a cannabis industry, but do it consciously, do it with your fire chiefs, do it with the safety and well-being of all in mind. Don't be bullied by an incoming industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jennifer K. Smith, if you'd like to unmute and state your name for the record.
This is Jennifer Smith.
Right.
Good afternoon. This has been a lengthy process. It's a process that we've tried to address several times over the past few years, and I want to make sure that it's understood that we are not expecting this to be decided today, and I think that some people think we're pushing for this to be decided today. We certainly aren't. There's been a lot of great commentary today, and I think what we're seeing is that there's more input that needs to be given to this. As the cannabis industry, we're on board paying road mitigation fees. We're on board paying the fire department fees. We're on board with safety and doing the right thing. We're asking for our agricultural product to be considered, to be able to use the ag exempt buildings that are offered to all agricultural products in the county and the state. As mentioned earlier, we are classified as an agricultural product. As speaking to the temporary structures, this is nothing that's going to get done this year. We're well aware of that. We just need something moving forward so that there is time to transition. The building process is slow. The PG&E process is slow. As a sustainable industry, we need a path forward to get to permanent structures, whether they be ag exempt or not, whether they're U classification or not. Some people might want an FS1 building. All of these are, there's input that needs to be taken. It needs to be considered. I know that the plan is to send this to the planning commission, the ag committee, the cannabis task force, and that's the process I think we just want to see moved forward. And regarding, the state rules are ever changing, and that's where we get into the point of hoops that are now going to be allowed, sorry, light deprivation specifically is going to be allowed on outdoor licenses. Again, this is another curveball that we need to be prepared to pivot on. So I urge the board to consider this and continue its path forward through whatever decision-making process we need to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public before I close public input? All right, I'll close public input, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier or Vice Chair Paeska.
So I agree with this conceptually, but I think that there is a lot here and from some of the input, maybe too much in one resolution. What we've developed with the task force and our advisory councils is the pathway for developing policy. So and the other priority we've set is to look at the whole ordinance holistically and stop with the hodgepodge-iness that we have been adding to the existing ordinance over the last several years. So what I, I think in concept, I agree to this, moving it to the task force, but also making sure it aligns with, you know, what are their priorities? What are they already working on right now? Because whatever they're working on right now is going to get sidelined. And is this the highest priority? This is not something that's going to change this year's harvest. It is a high priority. I want to see from the task force where it falls in the strategy of the work that they're already doing and where it falls with the priorities of the tasks that they're already looking at. And we do know that there are some laws that are going to be changing in effect of the beginning of the year. So I would hate to do a lot of work with something that's going to just change as of January. So I would like to just understand the scope of what the task force is looking at and then, and then move it to the ag advisory committee and the planning commission and do all that work. But I think there's a lot of stakeholders. There's still a lot of input that needs to be gathered. I like the bullet points, and I like the concept. It's really difficult to, or there's a big difference, I'd say, between reviewing something and developing policy. And if you, if we're pushing this document to be reviewed, I think it's going to get a lot of redlining and crossed out and mixed up. But if we offer a concept and some bullet points, I think we're going to get a lot stronger feedback from the advisory groups that are going to be helping pull this policy together.
Supervisor Sabatier.
And so I'll respond to that. I know I asked for a January 30th. I'm flexible on everything that's provided. Again, my goal was to figure out how to not have what's been happening the last few years happen this harvest. I failed to meet that timeline, and I just didn't want the work to go to waste. So I'm flexible with everything. Pressure from the cannabis industry, absolutely zero pressure. In fact, they disagree with what I'm offering, not wholeheartedly, but we don't agree. We don't align 100%. So I don't know where that's coming from. It's a needed aspect. Right now, the difficult part is if you want to add a building, you got to go back to update your use permit. Right now, use permits are known to take potentially anywhere between one and a half to three years. At what point will those things get approved while the industry waits to get the right amenities to actually complete a seed to harvest process? When it comes to 4290, I know that Supervisor Simon and I had a conversation about setting a 4290 standard for agriculture. We have not done that, and I know that I have failed to bring that forward. I've been waiting for a little bit more stability within the departments to be able to bring, but we need to bring that forward as well. And if it triggers commercial, then it triggers commercial, and 4290 needs to be met. That is already part of the standards that are in the conditions of approval, and we need to have those conversations so people understand. Before you ask for this, just know that it will trigger the extra work that you may need to do to your property to make sure that it's safe to access. Part of this entire process is also to enhance the code that we have to make it more safe, where right now there is no specifics for people to follow to make sure that we have a standard when it comes to ag exempt or any of those things. I know there's been an offer to split the ag exempt and temporary, and again, I'm okay with any changes that are proposed or will be done. My goal was temporary doesn't sound as safe or as aesthetically pleasing or as right. I want to see things that are going to be fully approved by the community development chief building inspector. That is just my vision. That doesn't have to be the end vision. The 100 amp limitation by reviewing, I know the building inspector went to many different county sites as well to take a look, as did I, and 100 amps kind of seemed to be the limit. In my opinion, once we set a standard, if you go above that, then you just need to get a building permit, just like everyone else would have to. So I think we need to set certain limitations. As far as state updates, yeah, we need to be prepared to pivot, but until we know exactly what the INC is going to say when it's finalized, I don't think we should prepare to create ordinances or resolutions that change things ahead of time until it's actually approved and we know it's coming. So today is not that day where I think that we should be looking at implementing those things. Those conversations could happen. So hopefully, if we take off the deadline, it can help with making sure that everything goes through the right process and it doesn't feel rushed. But I do want to make sure that this does come back before next year, where we find ourselves again in the same scenario where harvest season is coming, and we know that makeshift temporary buildings are being propped up to make this happen. This is an industry that we've all shared our support, that we do want to see this continue in the future. And so I think that having a, not a specific deadline or timeline, but ensuring that this is in place before next year, so people have the chance to approach community development, develop what they need, even if it's temporary buildings, you still need to get approval for the things that you will be doing. And all of that takes time. So again, willing to change whatever needs to happen, didn't want the work to go to waste, and so wanted to make sure and bring it to the board.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Obviously, very complicated conversations moving forward. So I am in support of moving this forward today to continue those conversations. I appreciate you, Supervisor Sabatier, saying not a time limit, but these conversations definitely need to happen. Yeah, it's challenging every year as we go through this. I know the industry that is being established is starting to take those steps forward, and we've supported as much as possible. But when you grow a product and you cannot finalize it, it just, it doesn't make any sense. And we've got to get it figured out. And I completely agree. It won't be until next year. I appreciate the industry understanding that challenge, but we've got to get it done. Every year we come back, the last six years that we've been doing this, or five years that we've been growing product. As you hear, this industry is stepping up to the challenge. You know, the product that has grown here is starting to be well-known, I think, across the state, and we need to just continue the industry to help that finalization in that process that needs to be done to complete the product. There are a lot of challenges to come, and you've got people on both sides of the industry, either you're for cannabis or not, and, you know, we know there's fine lines. But realistically, for me, as a supervisor from day one, this is an ag product that we need to eventually get to that point where it's just, just like any other ag product that can be grown here. And it's with the federal government, with the state regulations, that makes it a challenge for us. So I know we're trying to walk those lines from what we have here, but there are plenty of complaints that we get, at least I do, for even the ag industry that we completely support here, the grape industry. You know, there's things that you have to do that affect community members that have lived here their entire lives. I can go to a specific example of 23 fans for frost protection that were just put up on a large agricultural area in middle town, and you hear it from miles away, even my own home, two miles outside of town. Those 23 fans lining, it sounds like a helicopter invasion. It just started last year. I completely understand. We're in an ag supportive county. Try and take those constituents' concerns that aren't happy with it, try and have those conversations, and always give them a process to address that through appeals or public hearings, and that's really what we're here to do. So there is no bullying. This is something that was passed by the state of California. This is us trying to establish the industry here in Lake County that's legal, and we need to continue to do that. It is having positive impacts in our communities, and 10 years from now, I think it'll be completely different, the conversations we're having. So, you know, my thoughts are we can move it forward. As far as separating at this point, I think we just move forward as is, as presented. Appreciate, like I said, removing the timeline because it is going to take time to do that, but I want to hear this. And I know in cannabis, there's, you know, the season that goes on. I know it can go all the year round if you have the right permits, but making sure that we get this thing back to us, you know, March, February, March next year, so we can get it completed before the end of, you know, next drying, 2023's drying season. So. So, those are my thoughts on it.
All right.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I'm pretty sure we're going to move forward with something today and just wanted to say that, you know, with the regard to bringing, things like this have been coming up quite frequently and we have to figure out and pivot how to do it. We have to also keep in consideration of what's happened before and look at what could be considered as pretenses or, or, what's the word I'm looking for? I'll think of the word. But the bottom line is, is that once we solidify this, it gives the opportunity to bring it to the ad hoc committee, bring it to the different agencies to give their comments, beat it around and bring it back here to us. And so, I, I think it's a great idea to allow that. It's what we created the ad hoc committee for. I understand there might be a priority thought on it and I, and I get that. I just know that with this being discussed amongst those entities and the planning commission, I think it helps us out to move forward with where we need to go on this. And still can't think of that word, but it'll come up and I'll say it later. But precedence, that's the word. So, anyhow, with that, if there's anything else, I think you have your.
I, I do want to offer one change is I know that I said to Ag Advisory Board and I said to Cannabis Task Force, I'd like to send it to the fire chiefs meeting as well so that we can make sure we get their feedback because obviously we heard loud and clear today. I, I'm in line with what they're asking for. I did not put what they're asking for on the ordinance because it's not what I heard from the rest, especially when speaking with the Farm Bureau. And so, I tried to go compromise in the middle, but I'd love to make sure we get their recommendations and their feedback directly from them rather than waiting for them to have three minutes to speak to us. So, that would be my, my change unless, and if there's no more.
The whole reason it was, I tried to bring it at 10:30 was because they, I got a call from them, so it worked out. It may have been later or whatever, but it worked out. So, go ahead.
Well, I, I think there's been a lot of changes that have been discussed, which is why I'd like to see the bullet points pushed forward and not the resolution to give more flexibility for the advisory groups and the stakeholders to give their input without the confines of something that's already been written. So, we, we, we know what we want to address and we know the timeline, but, you know, we want to have this come back in the wintertime, February or, I, I'm not sure that January is going to work. You know, the Ag Advisory Committee doesn't meet until November. It's really dependent on farmer schedules. So, that's why I, I'm in favor conceptually. I agree with what's been said here. It's just, I feel like this document is going to be really cumbersome for the groups to work through. And, and, and that's why I think, you know, you're, everything that you had in the, in your presentation with the bullet points, you know, push that forward. Say, this is what we want addressed. So, we're not putting words in their mouths and, and having them try to, you know, figure out where their thoughts align with the text. But I think it's a, it's a more organic process that's going to come from those advisory councils if we give them the task of, of how to solve all of these problems rather than work within the confines of a document. That's my concern.
Supervisor Spatie?
What I'd like to suggest is that I can attach the presentation with that and each group can choose to start with. What, what I don't want is three separate ordinances coming from the planning commission, coming from the ag advisory, coming, so sending what's there, sending the bullet points as well, and then making, they can make the decision on, we're going to ignore what was offered and we're just going to go with the bullet points and say, this is what we recommend because we don't like the way this is written.
Right. But we're, we're not sending it out to all the advisory groups at the same time. I think we start with the Cannabis Task Force. And because obviously there's thoughts from the, you know, in cannabis world of like this needs to be uncoupled and separated and, you know, should be a separate ordinance. So, that, that's why I, you know, I think start with the bullet points, start with the Cannabis Task Force and then progress through the other advisory council and planning commission.
Supervisor Spatie?
I would prefer not sending more of a blank slate. I think that, that starts the entire process over. That's already taken up some time. So, I disagree. But glad to put it all together and they can choose how to progress.
So, what I'm, what I'm thinking is, is that once this and if this is passed, it goes to all of the different groups that we identified, right? That would go there. Then with their collaboration and discussion, once it's brought forward, it's to the planning commission where they will vet or decide on what goes from there, then that'll be brought to us. Okay.
So, everything goes separately to all the advisory councils then to the planning commission?
All of this will go to them plus this presentation, so they'll all get their version of it, decide how they want it, which is almost like having three different ordinances. But at the same time, then that will, those, those recommendations will go to planning commission. Planning commission will say, okay, we all add this. This is our interpretation. This is what we like. That kind of gives them the opportunity to, you know, decide on it the way we might decide on it in the future and then, and then go from there.
And then who writes it after the planning commission? Who pulls everything together? Is that going to be county council or how is? Yeah.
Ms. Grant, yeah. Okay.
Yes, I saw.
She said yes. She said yes. I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking. I'm sorry for looking that way.
And just to add that I did have county council review and provide some feedback and do appreciate, I forgot to mention county council for the work that she provided as well for the review before putting it in front of the board.
Seriously, I'm happy to, to assist in, in drafting this. And obviously, all of these commentaries that come to your board are recommendations, but ultimately, any ordinances decided by, right now, the four of you because you're the ones who legislate on behalf of the county of Lake.
I see Maria, Maria had her hand up. Did you want to speak on this? Please unmute and we'll hear what you have to say.
Morning. Thank you. Community development has standard processes for ordinance amendments that include agency review prior to going to the planning commission. If it pleases the board, we could go ahead and pick up this draft ordinance, move it forward through agency review, which would include the fire chiefs, synchronize or gather all of the agency comments and recommendations before we take it to the Cannabis Task Force. And then the planning commission. And then back to your board.
And the Ag Advisory.
And Ag Advisory. Actually, that, Ag Advisory, yeah. That would, we'd probably keep that within the, the agency review as well. So, but that, we, we could integrate that all into a process that's very similar to what we do on an everyday basis.
Quick question for Director Turner. Because I, I want to make sure that we don't waste anybody's time and that if you do an agency review and then it goes into the hands of the Cannabis Task Force and it goes in the hands of the Fire Chiefs and the Ag Advisory Board, where to me, that's where the largest change could occur from, that then you would be offering an ordinance that's a little bit more towards the finalized version that's being prepared for the planning commission for other agencies to review rather than kind of more of a raw source material that still has that potential to get that strong feedback from those groups that really could change the ordinance.
We could switch the, the path.
But I do like the.
Start with the task force for their recommendations and then send that out for agency review.
I do like the agency review. And if that's already a part of your process anyways, then that would be the case for, before it goes in front of the planning commission.
All right. Thank you, Director Turner. I appreciate that input.
If I could ask one favor, just a little clarification on timeline. It sounds like we're sort of settling more towards completing the process to get back to the board by February and March. Is that correct? Because I've heard take away the timeline or the deadline, but have it back before the beginning of the year. So, if, if you could just get a consensus on that, that would help us a lot. Thank you.
And I would suggest by spring, which is at least, you know, March 21st to June 21st to make sure that you have enough time and that we can finalize it before winter comes for when harvest season occurs.
Thank you.
Just to open that up a little bit more on the calendar.
I would agree with that.
All right. Ms. Grant? Okay. From that, I think we can.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution with the amendment to send it to the Fire Chiefs Association and follow the RFR process after all feedback has been given back from those groups.
Resolution has been offered. Please conduct the roll call.
And I will attach the bullet point, PowerPoint.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution passes. And so, with that, we'll go, we'll take that route and move forward on our agenda. And first, I'll entertain a break. We're going to come back and do 7.7. But we'll take a five minute, brief five minute break and come back at 11:40. Welcome back. You know, it's a little longer than expected, but it's 11:49. If we can conduct this to around 12:30 and then take our break then, is everyone okay with that from the board's perspective and staff?
All right.
Coming back at 1:30 or 1?
We'd be coming back at 1:30 if we take the lunch at 12:30. Okay. If everyone's good with that, we'll move forward. 7.7, discussion and consideration of the county's contractual relationship with Elijah House and the retention of an outside auditor to review and assess contract and funding compliance appropriations and expenditures. And I'll go ahead and start out as I brought this forward to the board. If you've got a chance to read the, the memorandum, as you know, Elijah House recently ceased their, or vacated the Juvenile Hall that we have been trying to work with them on for housing, the housing issues in, in Lake County. And so, with that, they provided a letter and talked about some of the continuing work that was coming forward. And a lot of other things have taken place since then. Of course, there's media that has been writing, writing articles about the situation as well in the town halls. There's been frequent discussion, in fact, last year during a town hall, it was discussed in May of 2021 that the group would be attempting during that time to work in Lucerne as an administrative capacity for the, the old visitor center on Highway 20. During that time, there was no implication that there would be any type of work with directly the home, the homeless. It was more or less going to be more of an administrative type of deal. After that, fast forward to July when they, when they stated they would vacate as of September 4th, they vacated a little earlier. And it was requested for them to meet with one of the MACs and there was no one that came forward. I had talked to a couple of folks. They had mentioned that they would continue in Lucerne on their own funding. However, they did mention HHAP funds and that was never, that was never specified except for when they told me that and then posted it online on their website that they would continue working out of Lucerne, renting and leasing from a private owner, but also continuing forward with that. In turn, that was a little surprising. And so, I know that there's been a lot of discussion around it, wanted to get this on the agenda so we can get to a point of discussing it and find out where we can go from here. I don't know Anita, if you wanted to add anything to this or, or no.
I was there. I think you've covered it as an introductory matter.
Okay. Thank you. And so, I do know that Todd, you're on and I know that you've had some public inquiries and also some, some initial work when this very much, when this very discussion started because of course Elijah House initially was working with the county for emergency shelters and during COVID. And so, I know from that point forward, we're at this point and that goes back to 2020. And so, I'll go ahead and give the floor to you if you'd like to give some insight or, or anything else or have anyone else you would like to provide some insight. And I don't know if anyone from the Elijah House is online, but if they are online, I gladly would allow them to speak as well. So, Todd, without further ado, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Todd Metcalf, Behavioral Services. In, in light of, of this item and the suggestion that an independent audit takes place, what I would like to ask or suggest is that I can, I can work with my staff to pull all of the, the reporting, auditing and monitoring documentation from the grants that, that have been awarded to Elijah House and perhaps bring it back to your board next Tuesday so that we might be able to make a more informed decision. But I, I'm just kind of thinking out loud as far as how to move this forward. Because I think that would be, I think we might be enlightened by what I could, what I could bring to, to this board.
All right. Any questions for Todd? Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I want to thank Supervisor Crandall or Chair Crandall for bringing this for discussion. It's definitely been a hot topic for the public and also for our local media. And I think us not doing anything is, is not the response that our constituents expect from us. I think that there's more unbiased opinions if we look at an independent auditor to review this. And I think if what we anticipate is to have authentic transparency, I think that not going through the department is probably the better way so that there can be public trust in the report that we provide. So, I, 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 I want to ask a question. You brought up the Lucerne one and here it asks for review of fiscal funding compliance. Is there a way to review use permit as well? Because is the permit that they received for the Lucerne one that would allow for that type of activity?
From what I understand, they don't have a permit because they, they're leasing from the owner of that property.
But wouldn't that property have some sort of, whether through zoning or through use permits, have a limited capability of what can and can't be done?
I, I agree with you. I think there is a zoning specification on that property that would allow or disallow for specific things to happen. So, but I know that there was never a situation where they went for a use permit or anything like that. I know that there's been discussion around that from the public, thinking that the county approved or disapproved that, but there was never something that came to the county on, in regards to that. It was a private owner and it just went from there.
So, would you prefer getting the report from the audit and then making a decision whether or not to take a look at that? Or do we want to simultaneously maybe request for code enforcement to review or for community development to review that facility use?
I would be open to that as well. I mean, I don't know if the others will, but I, I would be okay with that. And so, didn't know if you had any more questions or anyone had more questions for Todd? Or Todd, did you want to respond or have anything else to add to that?
No, but I, I'd still be more than happy to pull whatever reporting and documents we have around the funding that was provided to them for their homeless shelter operations at Old Juvenile Hall. As I, as I've stated before, the, the funding that they've received has, there's no connection to this Lucerne facility whatsoever. So, and maybe, maybe it wouldn't be useful. But I, I'm more than happy to provide whatever information you need based from all of the auditing and monitoring we've done so far.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just want to add that this, this was brought to my attention, Director Metcalf, you and I talked about this nine months ago, maybe a year ago. It was an ex-employee that contacted me about some concerns about the, the financial stuff. I did ask Director Metcalf to provide me with a report. I received a report. I'm not an auditor though. And so, I couldn't find anything within the report to suggest that this was, that the funding was used for other issues that we were not contracted with them to do so. But I, I, I like the idea of an auditor professional looking those things over. I just wanted to at least make that public and transparent that I did take a look at it, couldn't find anything myself, but I've never had the job of auditing people's fiscal activities. So, I'm, I'm very interested in this.
And so, did you have anyone else that you would like to have speak? Director Metcalf, that's online with you?
Not, well, I, I, I don't know if anyone from Elijah House is, is in the meeting, if they wanted to speak, but no, I, I, I will just follow whatever directive you, whatever you need from me, I will, I will, I will provide.
Thank you. And so, any other comments from the board before I open it up?
Just a question. You know, yeah, I heard members here looking, I'm in support of this, obviously. Thank you very much. Yeah, in support of moving forward with this from the auditor standpoint, my question is I didn't see anything unless I missed it. You know, expected costs, where it's going to come from to do this? We don't have any of that yet. We'll get that when we get the proposals. So, we're just trying to. We don't have any of that yet. We'll get that when we get the proposals. So we're just trying to engage. Okay.
Yeah, we, if I may, Chair, we don't know if it's going to be, we don't know the funding threshold. So it may be just quotes, written quotes, or we would, we may have to put out a RFP, but we won't know yet until we investigate more.
The other question is this, so a forensic audit, is that what we're asking for or we're just asking for an audit? Just a question.
I wouldn't necessarily say it was a forensic. What I'd like to hear from the board today is the exact, what goals you're trying to achieve? Is it contract compliance, reporting compliance, use of funds? I think I'm listing them all, but.
Think you hit all three of them. That sounded.
Add some more insights as well. One of the other things that in dealing with situations like this, it's, it's also very important because there's a lot of questions. There's a lot of inconsistencies in regards to discussing this with not only the entity, but when it comes to the public's confused about it. And so I know at times I've asked questions and they've turned out differently. And so in order to also protect, the, the department to be protected in their statements and saying that, you know, we've, we're willing to bring forward what we need to. We've been doing X, Y, and Z and we, you know, so this would provide that, if that makes any sense. And it's, I think it's considered a audit, auditor to review and assess contract and funding compliance, basically. And so I think it does, it does what it needs to, to ensure that we're doing our due diligence. And then also behavioral health is basically, if, if things are the way they say, then this provides that, that, that to do so. And with outside eyes, like Supervisor Sabatier said, looking in, it, it really gives us a, gives us an opportunity to really dive deep. And so, so yeah, just, just, I don't know if that helps with what you were stating. So is there anybody in the chambers with a comment or concern about this item? I'll open it up to the public. I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers. I do see a hand up on, on Zoom and phone 4550. If you can unmute and we'll go ahead and open public input for that. Cause I'm not sure, not hearing you yet, but if you can work that, I think, what is it? Star six?
Yeah, they're unmuted.
Okay.
They went from muted to unmuted, just not hearing anything.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Larson with Lake County News. So is the information that would be brought back next week, is that going to also discuss the vetting process that was gone through to, in order to decide to use Elijah House's services? Because that's, that's a big portion of, of my concerns with this is was this organization even vetted? Because it's out of compliance with the Attorney General's office and it, and is basically lined up to have its nonprofit status revoked. And at the time that it came to the county, it was out of compliance for four of the five years it had been operating. So, so I'm, I'm concerned about that. So I'm, I'm curious to know, is that supposed to be part of what's going to be discussed next week? As, that's one of my.
Okay. So I'll, I'll see if, do we feel that that would be something, CIO Parker, do you think that?
Well, the proposed to bring information back next week was made from Todd. If you want an independent audit, this will take some time. There won't, I won't be able to bring this back next week because I have to.
Work on getting.
Yes.
On track with it.
And get the materials and have them review it. I mean, we, it may be 30 days out. I do not know.
Okay. And so I see that Justin Ammon is online as well, but we'll continue with the questions that we have. And so I am not sure if we can just ask that right now with, with Director Metcalf or would you need more time to answer that, Director Metcalf? Or about the vetting process, maybe we could add that to the list of things to review? I think that would be more appropriate if you're okay with that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because the RFP process went through the housing continued care, which as you know, we, we oversee that. So yeah, I, I could certainly bring that back or yes, I, we, we have that.
Okay. All right. So what I'll do is, so yeah, go ahead and continue.
So just let me ask one other question since this, since the sort of the discussion today is taking a slightly different form than I anticipated. So regarding the, the sober living environment that Elijah House is running on Highway 20 and the former county visitor center at 6110 East State Highway 20, Supervisor Crandall brought this up. It's my understanding that SLEs are not supposed to operate anywhere but in residential areas. And now that's just a cursory look. I'm not an expert like Maria Turner is on planning. But it's my understanding, that, that property's base zoning is commercial one. It's full zoning is commercial one dash parking dash design review. So that doesn't seem to, to gel with where SLEs can be used. SLEs are, are sort of notorious for being not permitted. And unfortunately, cities and counties don't have a lot of control over them. But I thought the one control they had was that they're not supposed to be in commercial areas. And this is right on the scenic corridor. It's in a former county-owned building. People still stop there to ask for instructions and information about the county of Lake, and this is what they encounter. And this is one of the things that Supervisor Crandall mentioned. People were very concerned about at the Lucerne Town Hall last year. They asked this directly and were told no, and then this turned up. So that would be my other question for now, and I can certainly bring my other questions back when Director Metcalf has more information.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Well, I, I'm going to push for, I kind of offered it, but now I'm going to say like, like looking for consensus to review the use of that facility or the use of that building rather than just kind of an open question. But the, also the first part that was requested about the vetting, without saying more than I should, I think that's something that will be coming to us in the very near future on a future agenda. About the process of vetting and things like that.
And so did you have any other questions? I still have like a minute 24 left for you on that, Elizabeth.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm, I'm getting used to using my phone for this. No, I think you've covered it for now. I am certainly happy to bring other, it sounds like there, these are going to be discussed in different ways in the future. So that's good for now. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So with that, I'm not sure if, but I do see that Justin Ammon is on. I see you raised your hand again. Okay. Justin Ammon, if you, if you had anything to add or state in regard to this agenda item, welcome it badly.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Todd Metcalf. I am at liberty to express that no grant funding was used in any operations in Lucerne that were overseen by Elijah House. We had originally intended to continue to provide, and I believe you referenced HHAP funding. That would be specifically housing navigation. We had originally intended to continue that. And I have given Todd notice that we are not able to continue to provide housing navigation fun, services. We had considered the Lucerne, but that has not turned out to be a fitting place to do housing navigation. So there are no, there are no allocated funds to Elijah House that will be used or were ever used in the Lucerne Visitor Center.
Thank you, Justin, for that clarification. Did you have anything else to add or any questions or any questions for Justin? All right, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, not seeing any. I will bring it back to the board for direction and go from there.
I believe the direction has.
Already been given. Okay, just want to make sure.
Those three things we, we want to cover as well as looking into the use of that facility, whether it fits within the zoning of what's allowed there. Yeah. And then that it'll come back to us for what that agreement with an auditor or whether it's an RFP or a, whatever the process is that we need to acquire them.
Ms. Grant?
Excuse me, Chair. Just for clarity, you may want to just restate the three things, just to make sure everyone understands.
All right. Go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, no, no. You were just.
Contract compliance, use of funds, grant funds, and reporting obligations. Include, and then adding the fourth, which is the vetting process.
All right. Is that, that amenable to the rest of the board?
I thought the vetting process is something that's going to come back to us at a different time in a future agenda.
It may be both.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Grant?
You'll have to excuse the lawyer in the room, but when you say contract compliance, what exactly do you mean by that?
That the, the person, both behavioral health and the contractor perform their duties and responsibilities as outlined in the contract. And they fulfilled their obligations per the contract requirements.
That fits. And, and for example, just a quick example is like reporting in six months as it states in the contract or things of that nature. Having those type of things brought back to us so we can review and see if those things are being done, what the funding is being spent on so we can assess if those things are properly being done. Ms. Grant?
So then what your board's looking for here is a compliance and fiscal audit?
Yes.
Okay, that's. No, that's okay. I just wanted to, that, that obviously alters in terms of the board's search for someone independent, someone who can do both.
And the goal isn't just to specify or single out this group. It's to ensure that all contracts and situations are tended to properly so that we don't, you know, open it up for other situations to occur as such, if that makes sense.
That's a learning moment.
And just a point of clarification here, this specifically is for the Elijah House and its contracts that we're reviewing at this time. Any future audits with regards to other contracts can be brought up at a different time.
Right. Thank you for that. I think that goes, yeah. Ms. Grant, anything else? No. All right. So I think we have direction and we'll go from there since it's basically been stated correctly. All right. With that, we will go ahead and we're at 12:11. We'll go ahead and start, take our lunch break unless there's something else that you want to cover real quick on this. I think anything else would be, probably take a little more time. So I'd rather just entertain the lunch break right now. It is 12:12. We'll just assume 12:15 is the proper time, come back at 1:15, move forward. I already stated that we would conduct 7.9 after lunch. So we'll jump right into that once we get back from lunch. Thank you very much and we'll see you after lunch. Welcome back from the lunch break. We'll continue on and bring this meeting back to order. We're going to move on to our 7.9, which is a consideration of requests by the Clear Lake Oaks Keys Property Owners Association for a waiver of fees for an aquatic weed herbicide treatment permit. We have Director Scott DeLeone here from Water, the Water Resources Director that will go ahead and give it forward to you. And I have a couple of things that I'll help with once you, once you go ahead and start, so.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. Folks from the Clear Lake Keys, thank you all for being here. As the memo stated, the Clear Lake Keys Property Owners Association has applied for a aquatic weed treatment permit. These permits are part of a process that we have to follow, Water Resources follows with our permit with the state of California for the NPDES program. So we have an annual permit with the state. One of the conditions of, of our permit with the state is that we permit aquatic weed spray in the lake. So this is part of our weed spray program. The, today's, and, and I'm sure you're going to hear a lot of details about their proposed project. It's, it's a large project. It's basically the treatment of their entire key network. They have a sizable area and our permit fee is based on a one cent per square foot of treatment area. So when you take the, the total acreage that, that is intended to be sprayed, and, and I need to point out something that I think is kind of important to show that we're trying to work with the contractor and with the, the Keys folks to minimize the fee. We've done a, a rough calculation and been working with the contractor to come up with just the area of primrose that needs to be sprayed that's in the water. We aren't counting the primrose that's going to be treated that's on dry land. So the, the low lake level is actually really helping them in that it's reduced the total area that we would be subject to for this, this fee. I, I'd like to point out that the permit fees that we charge are go to the program to pay for staff to do water quality testing. We have to do three tests whenever we're doing a, a test at a, at a spray site. We have to test before they spray, while they're spraying, and then we test again after they spray. The test samples are sent to a lab where a series of tests are performed. The, the tests cost about $300 per sample. So whenever we choose to pick a site and have it sampled, it's at least 900 or around $900 worth of testing for the pre, during, and post-spray test. We use these test results as part of our annual report that we have to give back to the state, again, as part of our permit. And these fees that we charge for weed spray permits pay for our permit with the state. They pay for, again, all of our staff time and all of our lab time. I, as the director, I don't have the authority to waive fees. And so I told the Clear Lake Keys Property Owners Association that I would bring this item to your board for your consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding our weed spray program, the costs of it. I, all of my fiscal staff is either on vacation or CPR training. So I have some information regarding the costs of our program from our budget from, from, that we prepared for this year. So if you want to ask any questions about costs and those types of things, I, I do have those numbers. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and certainly entertain any suggestions that you might have.
Thank you, Scott. I have a couple of things that I'll show, but I'll, first we'll go with the questions from the board and then I'll show. If there's any questions right now. Okay. So what I'll do is first I'll just kind of give a kind of brief synopsis of what I've been, part of this so far. I met with the Keys POA, I want to say a couple of months back. And they showed me the, and, and we've all seen it when you drive by the, the Keys, the primrose situation. It's a, it's really, it's really invested in those channels. It's also in different areas. I know it's around the Lucerne Harbor. It's in the, it's in Rodman Slough, all sorts of shores along the, the lake. I know it's there. And so one of the things that they've been asking is to ensure that, they want to eradicate it. It's, it's affecting their homes. It's affecting the channels. And so they showed me that and wanted to work with the county on how they can get it done. I'm glad that you were able to talk with them and, and, and work and bring this forward. I will show a map real quick just to, if I could share my screen, Matthew or, or anyone, I'll go ahead and, you know, offer that first. And we'll look at this parcel viewer that I have here and then I'll, I'll show a brief video. It's a four minute video. If you look right here, you'll see the Highway 20 that runs, runs along the normal area right here. That's the highway. And so if you look here, there's the North Shore Fire Department. This channel right behind apparently is, is state, is basically the state. This channel right behind apparently is state, is basically the state's property, what we hold it in trust, if that makes sense. So they're, they, as the POA are adding, they added that into their scope of work to conduct. And from what I understand, 20 to 30% is either county or other properties that aren't theirs, but they're concerned about it because the worry that it'll keep progressing without eradicating the whole amount, or treating the whole amount, or whatever the word, proper word for on that. So just wanted to show that. I'll briefly show the, the video as well. Let me see if I can get to it. There it is. And then bam, and then I will, oops, I got to go here first. Okay. And then share screen one more time. There it is. And, okay, and this is a four-minute video, and so I'll go ahead and show it and do that. Oop, my sound is not.
You might need to unmute.
Yeah. Can you hear that or no? I know what's happening. It's my audio. And I hope. See, that's going to be an issue there. Sound or?
No.
Okay.
Hey, Jay, can I make a comment?
So if you want to come up and guide us through this on the microphone, please?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, so basically what you're looking at is shore view, and this is part of the state of California's property and trust with Lake County. So my problem is, we want to spray that, but we don't have the funds to spray somebody else's property. This doesn't belong to us, but we have to eradicate it. This is where we need help. So we're going down to Stubbs Island. Pretty much everything on the right doesn't belong to the Keys, but we need to spray this, and we're asking for help, any help we can receive, funding, any other resources, guidance, we need help to eradicate this. If you look at this slide right here, it's almost extending all the way across the channels. It's blocking our channel. It's, and right now it probably is. This was two months ago. So if you look at this and there's a sailboat, you'll see more of this devastation going down. So it's not our property to spray, but in order to eliminate it, to get rid of it, we need to spray the whole thing. And that's going to take our funding from the Key, from the POA to spray somebody else's property. We really don't have the funds or the money to do this, so we're reaching out, trying to figure out what we can do. And this is part of the process of the waiver of the permit fee. But it's also a part of trying to figure out how to manage this.
This property right here, this is, is this Keys POA property?
Part of it.
Okay.
If it's on Highway 20, is that Highway?
Right.
So I wasn't watching. Pretty much everything on the right side belongs to somebody else, everything on the left belongs to us. It's splitting our channels.
Can we just let him, let Ed speak, please?
So the boat ramp right here, we used to be able to launch boats there, and if you went out there and stood in that right now, it would come up to my chest. That's how high it is. We have no other way to, to eliminate this, to get rid of it, other than to spray. We used to have a harvester, we can't use the harvester now. So we're, we don't know what to do. So that's pretty much it with that slideshow. There to go on for a lot, because this is usually a smooth presentation, but I don't know if your computer's not fast enough to play it. I had the same issue.
Right.
So that's pretty much what I wanted to show you. The channels right now, this is Anchor Village, it's almost dry, it's from one side to the other, and you can look at homeowners that tried to maintain this, but if people don't, it just encroaches all the way across. And if the water comes up, we're going to be really devastated because that stuff will root on the bottom and grow to the top, we'll never get rid of it. Now's the perfect time to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. And we'll, you will come up later and explain more. So I'll just, I'll stop the video from there. Let me, let me stop it. Okay. Just another thing to add about the visit that I had as well, because we did talk about the POA and their fees. You know, they have naturally, they have their own fees that they apply for each homeowner, and they are, one of the things that I liked seeing is when they talked to me, I think it was last week, they're looking to increase their fees to, you know, adjust for this in the future. I know that that's commonly something that the board would be concerned about if, in considering something like this. And so they're trying to do their best to get to a point of taking care of this. They, they're, they've been calling different agencies, different people that are in the state assembly and, you know, senate and whatnot, they've been reaching out to them. But at the same time, we're here where we're at, and I appreciate the work that Ed's been doing. He's been really consistent with me and, and trying to get this done. I know that they are looking at trying to do it this year, they want to do it this year, they're hoping that whatever comes out of this meeting, they can get moving on this situation and problem. So I'll leave it at that. I don't know if you wanted to, if there's anything else you wanted to add, or we can just go into questions and then allow the public to speak if that's where we're at there.
Well, no, I, I just think the, the area that he's talking about belonging to the state is an area known as Stubbs Canal, and it's, you know, it was a swamp and overflow land that was, you know, a channel that just came in off of the lake, and, and, and yes, it's, it's state property and, and, and then by default, it ends up being managed by the county. We don't, our line water resources, our, where we stop requiring permits and whatnot, where we have jurisdiction over shoreline development, cuts across right at the very end of what's called Stubbs Island and runs across to one of the properties there in the Keys. And so everything landward of that line into the Stubbs Canal, we don't, we don't maintain, we don't have any jurisdiction with respect to docks and piers and those types of things. But we do have a responsibility for the permitting of aquatic weed spray regardless of where it is, if it's on private land or, or land that is Lake Word of 779, any of those situations. If it's in the water, we have the responsibility of, of permitting that to comply, again, to comply with the permit that we have with the state, we as the Watershed Protection District. So while, yes, there is a, a channel there that is state land and, and then, you know, by default given to the county, there's a lot of other channels in there that, that belong to the Keys. And, and again, we've, we've really tried to work with them to only treat or only charge for the area that is in the water. And, you know, that, that video was taken, what, two months ago? Water levels dropped. I don't know how long ago their proposal is from, from their consultant, but about the only thing that I can do at this point is relook at, has that area that is in the water been reduced by the lowering lake level? And if that's the case, and we have to, we can do less testing, I'll be happy to consider that as well. But that's about the only thing I can do at this point.
All right. Supervisor Spatia.
So I have a couple. I have a couple of questions. Just to go back over that state portion of it, we're the ones who are the, to maintain those areas for the state, right?
Yes. I mean, it's, it's state lands, and, and if you recall, the state gave the county the, the responsibility of, of maintaining that, so.
Is, is there a possibility, and I'm guessing, and I could be wrong, that the HOA is a nonprofit?
Yes.
Is it possible to have an MOU between ourselves and a nonprofit for a combined project, and then the testing and all that comes from our area? So it's not like a gift of, we would be doing the project anyways, potentially on that state area, and that you say you only need one site from the, for the testing rather than multiple sites from multiple areas? Would that help to reduce where it's not seen as a gift of public funds, where we're just combining two different jurisdictional projects into one?
I, I defer.
Ms. Grant.
It is possible. Certain jurisdictions do work. It'd be less with the county and actually more appropriate for the Watershed Protection District, I believe, given their, their mandate of protecting the waters of Lake County. It would depend upon certain findings as to the public purpose to be addressed, though certainly I would think there would be in terms of potential water quality issues, flooding potential, all of those kinds of things could be considered by your board and you could work in conjunction. That would take an agreement. You also may want to consider contacting the state, the State Parks Division of Boating and Waterways. They should be involved in this too if it's state property, and they already have programs that are clearing this out when it's aquatic primrose. So is it possible to devise an agreement? Yes. It would require, again, a public-private partnership with everyone doing something. And the only other remaining issue is the existing ordinance, which doesn't really leave a lot of room for this, so your board may want to fashion it if you want to consider something like that as a pilot program to give time for the ordinance to catch up with what you might implement permanently. But I would caution one other thing. You mentioned the word precedent earlier, and certainly what you do here would establish that type of precedent. So you'd have to be prepared, I believe, to establish a program where you could show why this is a county issue, a public issue, in addition to the private issues of the property owners that are affected.
And I'm only looking at seeing what we can do to reduce it rather than taking it over and then making it entirely ours. And my last question is this, I see, and that was, I think, what Chair Crandall was trying to let us notice, was that some waterways are still public waterways and other waterways are more seen as private, in the sense that the property line goes all the way to the middle of the canals. But my question is, do the people pay a lease for their docks on those canals?
No.
Oh, they don't? So only once they're outside of those private areas? Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. Because that was confusing to me, because I've only heard of docks leasing the waterways. And so how are they paying a lease and then telling them that it's theirs? So that makes perfect sense now. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions from the board? Supervisor Simon.
So Supervisor Spatia asked the question that the Homeowners Association is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I guess one question I would have, because it seems like a lot of work, you know, to get it done, to create the new ordinance, set the precedence, but at least ask the question if this is a project that would fit into the district cannabis funds use to help cover those costs? Just, just a question.
Ms. Grant.
I think you'd probably have to ask admin what the parameters are for those funds that you're allocated, but what I can say is if it's put into a public-private partnership and the public purpose very clearly stated, it would be eligible, you'd eliminate the gift of public funds issue, which would, if it's appropriate to use funds for that purpose, it would eliminate that barrier.
And I probably just complicated it or, but I, I just wanted to ask that question because, you know, I thought all the suggestions were good, we want to try and do what we can to work together in each district, so I just, I think that's a question I have.
No, thank you for that question. Susan, did you have a?
I'm texting Stephen.
Oh, okay.
So we were just discussing cannabis before we came back to lunch.
So we, we can, when Stephen comes aboard, we'll go, well, he'll answer.
Okay. All right. I mean, that's one of the main ones. I think some of the suggestions that were made are challenging, you know, really one that gets you is setting the precedence is the long-term concern on something like this and, you know, those discretionary funds, you know, if we could, if it could be done that way. I mean, if you have spent that on cameras or other things, as long as it's counting your community benefit, I'd even be willing to work with you on that with some of my funds, so. Gone by there, drive, obviously not my district, but spend a lot of time driving around the county and everything, and I've definitely seen as the channel just is filling up, you know, I think that one that we're talking about right by 20 is completely dry now, right? I'm guessing. It looks dry. I haven't pulled over and taken a look at it, but just looking at those things and, so anyway, trying to find a solution and not putting the pressure on you, obviously, because there are only certain things that you can do. I appreciate the directors bringing the conversation for the supervisor in that district, but trying to find a solution here is sometimes challenging, but I want to offer that. So if we can do something, I want to. I appreciate the opportunity too to go back and reevaluate the proposal. Maybe that's an opportunity. Instead of 13, it's 9.5. You know, I keep just throwing a number out there, just saying reduces that footprint of it, so. But I'm really, I got my one question, I'm waiting to see if we can get an answer.
So I'll let him answer and then I'll go right to Jessica. So Stephen, if you could answer that, and also I'll just throw another one in there just briefly, is during the budgets, I talked about royalties, and I know that I assumed it was in a specific district or whatnot, but this does, I don't know, and maybe you can help with this, does it, and I know it's written in this letter that was given to us as well, does it affect the invasive species type of qualification for that as well? Just putting that out there so that the question's answered as well, because it was in here in this letter, so. But first, I think we'll, we'll address Supervisor Simon's.
And the question was whether we can use cannabis funds or not? That would be allowable as long as, you just have to look at those funds, they still have to meet, since those are discretionary county funds, they still can't be a gift of public funds. So as long as we can prove that it is not a gift of public funds and utilized government funds properly, yes, that is funding source available.
All right. Go ahead, Susan.
Stephen, what about ARPA funds?
So if they are a 501(c)(3), the ARPA can transfer funds to those kind of organizations. That's the claiming code we are utilizing for like NCO, et cetera. It's the actual claiming code to transfer funds to a nonprofit that is fully 501(c)(3). So it is possible if the committee, ARPA committee decided to do it and they are a 501(c)(3).
Which committee is that you're talking about us or the committee that's for the ARPA committee?
ARPA committee first usually, but it comes back to the board before anything moves forward.
All right. Vice Chair Piscus here.
Well, I do have a couple of questions. One of them is, is the Homeowners Association a 501(c)(3) or, or 4(c)? Because I know a lot of HOAs are 4(c's and that does restrict.
5(c).
It's a 5.
501, yes.
501, 5(c).
Yes.
Yeah. So that, it does complicate it a little bit more. It's not as easy as a 3(c). But, so just looking at this as an ongoing, you know, we find a solution for this year, but then what's the plan ongoing? Because, you know, it can't be this big of an undertaking every year, so, you know, is the association going to be raising fees to cover it in years coming? What does that look like after this year?
I'll let them address the fees, and, and I did talk to them about some plans for the future as well, including the raising of the fees, of course, but that would be in conjunction with some water resources initiatives that we have a Blue Ribbon Committee that's long shot, of course, that could be something to look at, but it has to be more shovel-ready type of things as well, so. But that would, that would be long-term because it couldn't happen right away, even if it's considered. It needs to go to the Blue Ribbon Committee, you know, for, for projects as such, and it needs to be, it needs to be basically brought in a way where consensus is built, so it could, it takes like a peer review process, but at the So it could, it takes like a peer review process, but at the same time, things like this have been pushed through those as well.
With the blue ribbon? Would it, and would it be lake-wide, like anywhere there's primrose infestation?
I know that it would either be, it could either be that or, Anita, I see you looking, so I want to make sure I'm not going.
Oh, no. It's just a question of you're going to have to decide before you implement for one grouping what you want this to be because that's where the fairness will lie. Plus, you're going to have to decide what you determine to be the public purpose here because the benefit can be incidental to private citizens, but it can't be the primary purpose or you walk right into the constitutional prohibition. And of course, the people who live in this area and the homeowners association will have to figure out exactly what their contribution is going to be because a partnership means everybody contributes if you're going to attempt to do it this way. So there's still a lot of moving parts that would have to go to this, but as I said, I think it's probably better suited for watershed protection, given their mandate. But of course, that's completely up to you. But you can't really adequately legislate group by group by group. You have to think of the issue you're trying to combat and legislate for that.
Just real quick, Scott, and I don't know if there's someone that can, you probably can answer this, but if there isn't, maybe someone can. But let's say hypothetically that we can't get to it this year. It's in the channels still and then the water raises and hoping that we get the rain that we need. And then boats are coming out of the channel during that timeframe. And is it, does it spread? Does the primrose spread from that point? So like, could it be spread when folks go out on their boats to different areas? Could it attach to the boat and go to a different area? Does that make sense?
Yeah. It's my understanding that primrose does spread through fragmentation. So yes, it could be, it could be something that if it's stuck to the side of the boat or it's in the propeller and it goes out in the lake and the boater gets it off of the propeller, either by diving in and removing it or backing up and removing the weeds, then yes, it could spread.
I just had that question. Thank you for answering that. And I see Supervisor Sabate, you have your pinup. So go ahead.
Well, Supervisor Simon said he might have complicated and I think I might complicate it some more. I was seeing this as a unique situation in the sense that it's in the water, it's an extension of the lake, but after listening to the conversation, we've had a previous conversation about other HOAs and trees. This is kind of a similar situation where it's on private property and if we open the door here, then we have to open the door, not have to, but it potentially has to open the door to something else that I'm not sure that we have the capacity to be able to do. But on the other hand, what Chair Crandall brought up, what would we do if there was mussels out there? What would be our efforts? Because, yeah, it does proliferate out into the lake. I mean, if we don't stop it growing here, eventually it'll stuff up the channels coming off the lake and grow into the lake and eventually continue growing and growing because it has room to grow. What would we, what would be our position if it was mussels instead that were found in one of the arms but on private property? Eventually, that also has the potential to proliferate and impact a lot of other things. So I just, that's what's in my mind is obviously we need to be cautious in how we move forward. I think this is a necessary thing for us to look at and figure out because I know when speaking with a lot of the fishing tournaments, there's some Airbnbs in there that anglers rent and go out and that's part of our economy. By stuffing this up, it kind of prohibits that a little bit. Difficult. But my question again, what would we do if it was mussels? Is there a plan or we don't know where, depending on where it starts, what we would do?
That's a, that's a big hypothetical. I would say that my, I would say for sure the state would be heavily involved if those were, if mussels were found in one of those channels. And they would probably have a lot more to say about what happens there than we would have. I think they would take over, in other words, and perhaps close that. It would not be unreasonable to see something, some barrier installed and then a treatment, a treatment attempted within those channels. But I think the state would take the lead on it, to be honest with you. I'm not trying to dodge the question, but I think the reality is the state would, would take the lead on that.
And the way that I see it is mussels would be invasive. This appears to be invasive and so is there, and if we're saying the state would probably come in, at that point, it seems the public-private situation is erased and that there's a duty to try and clear this up. Would it have similar analogies for what we're dealing with today? I just want to bring that up, the thought going through my head.
I appreciate that. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. But I think, you know, Director De Leon is correct, you know? If that was the situation, obviously it would come with funding, it'd come with opportunities for partnership and even if they were taking over. But, you know, this one, I would agree with the very different hypothetical conversations because they weren't talking the entire health of the lake. And that's a big stretch to make just off of the Keys situation that we have right now. I know it could spread, but it wouldn't be like that situation. So I just, I want just two different conversations completely there, at least for myself. I couldn't make that because, you know, now we're talking the entire health of the lake if something like that was found. So a different situation. I just, I had to say that. So at least from my point of view.
And I think too, for me, I see it in around the shorelines. I've seen it in the Big Valley Basin, different shorelines there. I didn't get a chance to see the county-state park, if it has it there or not, but I do know it's in some of that area on that side. I know Robin Slough is full of it and all the shorelines along, what is it? It's a Robin Hill area. They're sharing that same frustration with it as well. And so I just know that it's there. It's not just this area, but at the same time, they've got, they've got a plan to at least they paid or worked with an agency to conduct the eradication or spraying of it. And so I know that that's where we're at with this, but I'm just highlighting that it is and I don't, has this came up before? Has this primrose been in place before? Is this the first we've seen of it? Like, has it been here like when we've had droughts before and what happened with it then?
Been in the lake, been in the lake for a long time and just, and it's just getting worse. And, you know, I think the Keys is, I'm not going to say, well, they could potentially be the worst. That, you know, I've been around the lake quite a bit and they may be the worst case. They just, just by the nature of shallow water, it's there and it, you know, there's nothing stopping it and it's continuing to grow. So they may have the worst case.
Supervisor Simon, you have your...
No, just reading some of the material provided us, to us today. It really goes down to, right, the change to the permitting fees to one cent per foot for the estimate that the POA received. So prior to 2020, right, we were talking total difference in 2019, $180 to $150. So, you know, really that's, that was changed. So it was, obviously was there because there was the permit there. So, okay. I just wanted to make that point and read the materials here.
Anything else before I open it to the public? All right. So I'll go ahead and open it up to the public at this time if anybody would like to come forward and speak on this item. Mr. Legan, I know that you're the chair or the president of, president, so I'll give you, you've already got to speak, of course, on the other thing presenting to us, but if need be, once you do your three minutes, I'll let you come back and finish up with some more to add to it.
Clarification, we're a 501(c)(4).
That's what I thought, yeah.
I'm sorry. I apologize. So if you have my letter, it says morning if you want to change that to good afternoon. Deep breath, I was always told to do that. My name is Ed Legan. I currently serve as president of the Board of Directors for the Clear Lake Keys POA, representing 500 and, or 830 homeowners. That's a huge amount of homes in our area. The Keys are being destroyed and the invasive water primrose is decimating the lake. If we can't come together and with a solution for all of us, we will lose this battle. We can't hide from this and just wish it away because it won't go away. All of us need to take action to save the lake. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for considering Scott De Leon's motion to waive our permit fee. I received word that Lake County staff doesn't recommend the waiver of the permit fees because of granting a special privilege and expenditure of public funds. My question is, what are public funds? Aren't we the taxpayers contributing to the public funds? We estimate the POA residents pay nearly $2 million annually to the county. Again, how is this different than the 1.3 million the geyser spent over the last five years spraying the west end of the lake, mainly Lakeport? What we, what we are asking for is the waiver of the $13,200 permit fee, which is less than 1% of what the county spent to spray the west end of the lake over the last five years. This year, 24, 240,000 of the geyser funds were used to spray the west end of the lake again. And what we're asking for is 5.2% of that budget to be used to waive or help the cost of spraying. Aren't the POA and the 830 homeowners worth consideration of waiving the fees? We are part of the lake. We were also informed to the Public Health Advisor from Vector Control that we have West Nile virus in the Keys. This is now a major health concern and was partly caused by the tremendous amount of primrose and algae in the Keys. Our only solution going forward to stop the primrose is to spray and kill the root system. The Keys is asking Lake County to join forces to develop a long-term solution to eradicate the primrose from the Keys. We estimate the Keys channels are nearly 5 million, 5 miles long and 1.97 miles of the adjacent properties are outside the Keys jurisdiction. We, and we are in the county of Lakebed Management jurisdiction. We will spray all properties that are in the Keys and even those adjacent to the Keys. We can't take on this project alone. Not only will it take the county to join forces, but other outside agencies as well. After watching the Keys video, would you buy a house in the Keys? Probably not. Would you ever want to visit the Keys? Probably not. Will this affect tourism? It surely will. This will become an issue not only affecting the Keys, but the economics of the entire county. In conclusion, we're going to try and do what we can alone, but we're asking Lake County for assistance. This isn't only a Keys issue, but it's also a lake issue. Please consider waiving the permit fee, join the forces to restore Clear Lake Oaks Keys to the original beauty. To us, this is paradise. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm Pamela Kaczynski and I'm a resident of the Clear Lake Oak Keys, both my husband and I, for 12 years. We have seen high water, our streets flooded. We have not experienced a drought in a three-year one. Where the water has receded, the primrose has just taken over. And I'm personally not an advocate of using chemicals or spraying, but at this point we've explored all options and this is an emergency, as you can see from the photos. The topic right now is the 13,000. The cost to spray using Waterworks, which is an approved contractor from the county, will be 40,000. So the homeowners are paying more than their fair share to try to treat the weeds. The question of whether or not this is private or public property has always been confusing for me. It is not really public property. The channels, six and a half miles of them, are actually all open for public access. We do not have gates at the openings to our channels. This is a popular place for our bass tournaments. In fact, this year, some of the top winners have caught their share of fish right in front of our home, in front of our docks. So bass, crappie, bluegill, catfish, it's a popular location to kayak, again, all open to public. It's a beautiful spot normally if we weren't having a drought. We have, we're home to varieties of wildlife. We have mink, otter, heron, grebe, egrets, Canadian geese, mallard ducks. The primrose, aquatic primrose, is incredibly invasive and it's prolific. It takes very little piece of it to float somewhere and spread and grow. As you can see from these, this is dramatic and something we've not seen in 12 years. And normally, the Keys has been maintaining it and able to keep control because there was water in the channels. The health problems that are caused with aquatic primrose are basically because it causes an obstruction of movement of the channel. That increases the algae growth and toxic cyanobacteria. That presents health problems for all. Provides a habitat for mosquitoes, which we know carry West Nile virus. They love the primrose. It is, the Keys is the home to the Catfish Derby that is sponsored every year by the Business Association. That provides funding for the fireworks for the Clear Lake Oaks community every year. It also provides funding to schools and the fire department. The fire department has there, as we pointed out, they have, they're on the channel and they have a dock. And because of the condition, they're unable to park their emergency dive team boat at that location. It's parked out of the area and not in the appropriate place. I understand the county still needs to be compensated for the time to process the permit. And, you know, the 13,000 seems high to me. And we've know, we moved from the Delta. So we know the invasive weeds that have been a problem in the Delta. And they have partnered, both Discovery Bay and Bethel Island, with local agencies and with the Department of Boating and Waterworks as well. We know there's, needs to be long-term projects and probably will involve Clerk or Blue Ribbon Committee, but right now we only see this as an emergency, frankly.
Pam, if you can wrap up. Your three minutes has been up.
So I hope that you can consider this and partner with the Keys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Board of Supervisors, for allowing me the time to...
What's your name, sir?
Well, my concerns for the primrose. My name is Joe Lundergreen and I am a resident of the Oaks. The primrose aquatic plant has consumed the residential channels of the Oaks. The Property Owners Association is working to approach this primrose attack. I'm here to ask you supervisors in helping rescinding the county permit fees concerning the primrose. I believe there are two important benefits to all residents of County of Lake and not just the Oaks residents. First, there are many miles of channels in the Keys. The channels are loaded with biodiversity. Many of the birds, such as grebes and pelicans and herons and osprey and ducks live in the channels. Fish such as the bass and crappie and catfish and bait fish for the native fish are there. Native hich make our homes in our channels. All this biodiversity is competing for, with the primrose. Second, tourism is an important contributor to the economy of County of Lake. The channels are a favorite destination for many of the fishing tournaments held within the county. The bass, the catfish, the crappie, the float tube tournaments enjoy the channels for their success. If one cannot get a boat through the channels, this tourism business goes away. In closing, my comments, I ask you supervisors to please help us. Help us by rescinding the permit fees. This is a benefit to all of Lake County.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Sam Boucher and I live in the Clear Lake Oaks Keys. Yes, and I would ask that you waive that penalty too, mainly so that we can do something The partnership, I would really like to hear you, I was glad to hear you guys say that, that, because to me it is a lake-wide problem. It's not a... It's not a Keys problem, it's a lake-wide problem. We could, uh, so it's beneficial to everybody to, uh, take care of the problem as quick as possible. The guiding light is the Delta. Uh, they started the same program seven or eight years ago and it is ongoing today as we speak, um, with spraying every year. The initial eradication took a couple of years to clear the, uh, marinas and the rest of that because they even had the shipping channels, uh, blocked. But the, uh, California State Parks Department has a division called Boating and Waterways. And that Boating and Waterways is managing and financing the spraying effort there. And as far as I know, the property owners, uh, which the Delta is largely private property, but canals, I mean, the, the sloughs are, uh, waterways and a very similar, uh, situation is, is in the Keys. And I don't see the eradication of an invasive weed being the homeowner's, uh, financial responsibility nor the county's. I think the, uh, value is, as the lady spoke, is getting the state involved also within a partnership and providing the funds that they can also tap from the feds. Spreading it out a little more and solving a, uh, public, uh, it would be nice for the public to be able to, uh, enjoy the waterways. And they have been open since the Keys were, uh, uh, first built. The Keys have always been open, all the canals been open to, uh, boating and fishing. And it made, a lot of it was made use of. The county, I think, is presently involved with a, uh, a spraying plan that's been going on for five or six years.
Sir, if you can, if you can wrap up, your three minutes is up, so if you can wrap, come in, come into a closing point.
Okay, uh, just a quick wrap up. The, uh, geyser fund generates somewhere around three million dollars.
Sir, if you can just completely come to an end, we've, you've expended your three minutes.
Okay, okay. The Oaks contributes somewhere around ten to fifteen to twenty percent of the effluent that the county gets from, uh, the royalties back from the-
Okay.
So we are, are with you.
Sir, you, you, thank you. So it's important, um, I, because I don't want to give someone more time that someone else didn't have the time to allow. So from here forward, I mean, just a reminder, please just come to an ending point, not try to bring up another point and go forward. Go ahead, sir.
I'll talk fast. Uh, my name's Fred Kaczynski. Uh, you've heard from my wife Pamela earlier. Uh, we've been property owners in the Keys for twelve years. I retired four years ago and we're full-time owner, uh, full-time residents now. Um, our house is directly across from the point of M and M Campgrounds. And in the four years that I've been here, that campground, that portion, portion of the Keys is just becoming overwhelmed with the primrose. My concern is not only just for the Keys, but for the condition of the entire lake. So if the Keys is not allowed to spray this year, that, that primrose from the point at the campground is going to move around and it will definitely be in the lake shortly. We went away on a vacation for two weeks, came back, and I couldn't believe how fast the primrose had already spread in that channel across from us. Time is critical with this weed. I, I am really, uh, enthused with what I'm hearing about partnerships and stuff, but I see the way government moves. And if we don't do something this year, by the end of this year, that weed will definitely be into the main part of Clear Lake. And once it gets there, as has been stated, once it wraps around a prop, uh, a boat, whatever, it, it will be more, more weed in the lake than any of us will be able to control. So, uh, as I say, time is critical. It grows fast. Um, I hope the county takes it into consideration. We have the money to spray, but that thirteen thousand plus is kind of putting us over the edge. And by the time y'all get together and regroup and decide is it going to be part of Waterways, it's going to be this, it could be possibly too late to really get a handle on this weed where we could do it now with the money we have. So really what we're asking for is just relief. We need some type of relief with that thirteen thousand dollars. Either a, a, a full let it go or a partial, whatever it is. Without that relief, the Oaks will not, the P O A will not be able to spray and that weed will definitely be in, into the main lake, probably within, uh, the beginning of next year, which is only a few months away. So I hope you all consider doing something with this fee. We as a group are willing to spend our portion of the money to get the program started and hopefully in the future, y'all could get together and through Waterways, the state, come up with a cohesive game plan where we all could work together and eradicate this weed before it really becomes something we can't control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tom Aragon. I live in the Keys. I've been coming to this lake since the day I was born. We stayed on old Highway fifty-three at the resorts. Um, twenty years ago, a little over, we moved to the Keys. In my time here, I've seen this lake come up, I've seen it go down. I've never seen this primrose until we've moved to Lake County. I mean, until we moved to the Keys. Now, my thought of the way it came, it's come down from Lakeport. Everything flows that way and that's how it ends up. Like they've stated, it is going to get around props and it's going to go out into the open lake. Now, in all the years I've been up here as a child, I never seen this stuff. When we moved to the Keys, you could fish across the canals from us. Not anymore. It's across to us. It's kind of all I got to say. I hope that, that we can get your help. If not, well, we'll have to figure something out. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Kirk Carpenter and I am a resident of Clear Lake Oaks Keys. Uh, although I've only resided here within the past year, uh, it breaks my heart to see the conditions the Keys are in today. So you see, I spent my childhood here in the Keys when my grandparents built one of the first homes in the New Keys, uh, basically located at the end of Everglades Boulevard. Their house was built in nineteen seventy-eight and I spent my childhood there from nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen ninety. Um, if you can imagine the memories that were created swimming off my grandparent, grandparents' dock in pure clean and clear water every day to the wide-open channels that you could barely swim across before running out of breath. The amazement looking under the dock as the afternoon sun shone, revealing dozens of bluegill, rock bass and crayfish underneath the dock. Having fun catching thousands of baby bass, catfish and bluegill in small nets, in small nets in the lagoons off the East Channel, only to release them and wish them well to someday grow into a bountiful catch years later. Um, also to the excitement of catching a ten point seven-five pound bass in the old Keys at the age of thirteen in front of my uncle. And he's looking at him so proud of knowing he taught me everything on how to fish, so. Can you guys remember in your childhood, memories such as this that shaped your life? Memories made you appreciate what nature gave you? Do you remember the sights, the sounds, the smells of those memories that you cherish in your heart so well? Those experiences make who you are today and I only ask that you help us today, in the future, and to do what's right in your hearts to help create these memories for our families, friends and visitors to our precious lake. The Keys are in dire need of county, uh, of the county's help in battling the ever-going expansion of primrose that is choking the life out of the water we so much cherish. Not only for immediate remediation, but for our livelihood and memories created for future generations. Uh, this year has been an exceptional year with being our third year in, in the drought and we have been able, unable to utilize the tools we currently have at our disposal to handle the primrose due to the low water conditions. And we ask for your help as a community and as a neighbor helping a neighbor. Please do what you can with those, with what's in your hearts, your memories and what you feel is right thing to do for the residents of the Keys and patrons of Clear Lake, our home. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. All right, uh, any other comments? I know President Legan, did you want to close on anything else? I know you asked if you can come up and say one more thing, if you can keep it brief. I'll go ahead and give you the time.
Um, I, I, any questions from the board? I mean, or Scott or anybody? What we're trying to do? We, we want to make, this, this is a long-term project for the Keys that we're trying to do. It's not just spraying one time. This is going to take multiple years. It's going to take partnerships with the county, other agencies to do this, to go forward. Again, we can't do this on our own. It'll never happen. We're raising our fees to the max of the homeowners right now, trying to do that. That's something, we're even doing special district funding. We're looking at any, any option we can. And without your help, we, we can't go forward. It just isn't going to work. We have enough to do a spray this year, to spray this year with a waiver of the fee and maybe next year we can, um, gain some more resources. But we do have enough funding maybe to go and do it next year with what we have, but we need multiple years to spray, multiple times. We need to eradicate this. The other thing that, uh, was brought up was M and M Campground. It's going to go around that corner, but the problem with that portion of the lake doesn't belong to us. We can't go spray it. We don't have the funding to go out there and spray private property. It's going to go around the corner. Some of this is already broken off. It is out, it, it's already out in the lake itself. It's going to root in, in the lake itself and pretty soon this is going to expand just like it did in the Keys. It's going to become uncontrollable. We need to have a, take a, take a step going forward to eradicate this and it's going to take an effort from everybody, not just us. Thank you.
Thanks. Supervisor Simon, did you, did you have, you, you got to say something or should I let the hand raised go first? So we got Angela DePomodao, if you have your hand up, if you'd like to unmute and, uh...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much, um, and I really appreciate Scott DeLeon for being there today. Um, this is a program that I manage. My name is Angela DePomodao. I am a, the Invasive Species Program Coordinator and I'm sorry I can't be there today. Um, but I just had four points to, for your board to consider and I really value the time that the citizens of, uh, the P O A have spent today coming in and, and I've talked it with some of them and I just really value you guys are engaged, um, and you're very enthusiastic and I really appreciate it and thank you for coming today. Um, this is an issue that's really important, um, and I've been out in the Keys several times. Uh, it is a problem, the creeping water primrose is around the whole entire lake already in a lot of coves. I can think of about four other associations that have come to me this year with problems with, um, primrose creeping across their entire dry channel. It is the end of the season, so any herbicide treatment that's applied right now is actually not going to be as effective as it would be. So, um, it would be better use of funds and time to apply early next year and it'll be more effective. Otherwise, you're going to be spending money, both the POA's money, the county money, um, without as much benefit as you would see if it was earlier in the season. Sorry about that. Um, I do acknowledge we need a long-term plan for primrose. I am starting that. The drought, um, has fed up that process of need. But this will also set a precedent, as you mentioned earlier. Uh, like I said, I had four other, uh, POAs or Cove associations that are on channels that have primrose, um, and they would also probably be coming before the board at some point and asking for free waivers to help them, uh, handle their primrose problem, um, also. So I do have plans to go before the Blue Ribbon Committee and ask for a lake-wide, uh, primrose management, um, assistance implementation plan. Supervisor Crandall was there at our last, uh, large Blue Ribbon Committee where we did talk about the issue and Rodman Slough, um, that's, that's also a big deal, issue there. Um, so I am aware of it. Um, and again, I just really appreciate everybody's time coming today and, and talking about this, um, topic and thank you again, Director Scott DeLeon. Um, and if anybody has questions, they can email me. My email is at the staff, is on the Water Resources website and there's a staff listing or they can call, um, call me at Water Resources too and I can talk more about primrose and plans that we have for that, uh, that species. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm not seeing any other, uh, hands up for public input online. Um, and so what I'll do is close public input at this time, bring it back to the board and, uh, I know Supervisor Simon, you were going to say something, so I'll, oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand up, Joan. So if you'd like, I'll let you come up and speak before I close public input.
My name is Joan. I have a lot of respect for everybody here. You've done a lot of study on this, but sometimes I get creative. Why not call code enforcement and call it a nuisance and abate it? And then the other thing is Calpine. I really like that gentleman's idea because they contribute the effluent that keeps the steam wells going and producing steam to make electricity. A letter to the Calpine wouldn't hurt. A letter of request for help and get a, get a scientist to study it. And then, um, also the federal EPA. There's cyanobacteria there. It's very close to the, to the toxic waste site. Ask the federal government if they can help. I mean, let's get creative. That's what I thought. I, I'm not being facetious, I'm just, like I do, I think outside the box sometimes. Thanks a lot. And I'm just trying to help with ideas that have not been brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. All right, so from there, I'll close public input, bring it back to the board. Go ahead Supervisor Simon and then, I know you had a statement to make earlier.
Yeah, just thinking things through here. Um, you know, I appreciated Angela getting on and looking at a long-term plan for this. And, um, you know, that's always how we have to look at things. So it sounds like some of those conversations are already happening. They'll come back hopefully before next year and we can go from there. So I think what's being asked today is a partnership and it sounds like the county is already taking some of those initial steps to look at this as a long-term issue for our lake. At least that's what I heard from Angela, but you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. So that's one part of the partnership. I think another request on the partnership, which I've already heard from Director DeLeon, is maybe to look at the current proposal that was done and seeing if there can be a reduction there. I don't know, you know, um, if that's possible, but I think that's a good concept. I also like to hear from the P O A saying, hey, we think we have enough for this year and next year, which gives us a little time to work on this. But the one real clarification question I have for this is, it was brought up earlier, I wasn't even thinking about this, the Catfish Derby. Who puts on the Catfish Derby?
Clogba, Clear Lake Oaks Glen Havan Business Association.
Okay, and so that goes, so would that, that's in this area, correct?
Right, it is. It's, uh, for-
So I know they give money to the fire departments. I heard they give scholarships, right? Were those some of the things that were brought up? I really see this as a great opportunity for that fundraiser, you know, because I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but did we support that this year? Did that come through, through here?
No, I think we supported the chamber one.
The chamber one, but there's an opportunity, right? Obviously to do that from our committee, uh, that, what is, that's under the-
Fish and Wildlife.
The Fish and Wildlife Committee where, you, you know, so I'm, I'm trying to put things together here instead of creating new opportunities. So, um, it sounds like that could be an avenue. I mean, scholarship's very important. I'm not trying to take away from anything from the fire department and other stuff like this, but when you think about it, the fishing tournaments has been a big conversation today, that Catfish Derby, if this could be added in there for the aquatic weed opportunities to keep that open for time and more and while we're doing it, you know, I know I'm talking through here, just trying to figure out situations. I think that would be a great thing. And the other part on the county partnership would be our Fish and Wildlife, hey, you know, we want to donate five thousand dollars a year, uh, towards the, uh, you know, towards the, um, right? That then I think clears the public event because it's not just for the Keys, but, you know, we're, we're sponsoring that event to help some of those funds be raised for it, so. Sorry, I'm thinking out loud here, but that's what we do. So, so I'm thinking that, I mean, hopefully the, the Catfish Tournament goes forever. I know during the pandemic, we had to close it down, but looking at those opportunities because I know you guys- because I know you guys, the POA has asked for happening now. The reality is, I think I can't get there today, but it sounds like some funds are there, and we're willing to work in that partnership to try and help ease the costs on that, to hopefully get to the two years of the funds that you currently have, and in that meantime, be working on other options. Those are my thoughts on the thought process today. Instead of creating all these other opportunities, because it is going to be a big conversation. If Angela can be successful with the Blue Ribbon Committee and other things, then we're looking at a long-term revenue stream, but we have something in our hands right now, which it seems like the catfish derby could be an opportunity if all partnership agencies could work together. And the thoughts would be, from the county input, would be, hey, we will look to maybe do those donations, you know, at least have the conversation, because I know we've done that for other fishing tournaments, so, anyway.
Thank you for that, Mo.
Sorry to lay it all out right here, but I, this is my chance to do it. So just putting those things together, and setting precedent is something that's been said a few times today, and we always got to be very clear of that, because you hear, I know it seems like the emergency for the Keys right now, but there are plenty of communities that feel like there are emergencies going on right now, and we got to just always try and put those conversations in the whole county aspect, and, you know, that's where I'm trying to get to today. Solutions, and I think we have the solution with the catfish derby and the fundraising and other opportunities if we can work together on that. I have seen in your paperwork, you have over 800 folks that pay into fees, and you guys are going to look...
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred to try and make some changes, maybe? I know that Ed also said that's very hard to do. Believe me, we know setting up here how hard it is to get everybody on the same page. So just talking out loud, but I think there's some opportunities there that we could look at. And just so you guys know that in the conversation today, it sounded like there are some funds to do some stuff this year, but I also heard it's not the time to do it right now. Need to kind of wait, at least from Angela, that it would be more effective if there was more water there, I think is what the conversation was meant. I don't know. Angela, maybe you're still on there to clarify, but you said, you know, you'd get more bang for your buck doing it at a different time during the year. Don't have solutions, sorry for putting it out there, but I think there's a path forward in that partnership, kind of, you know, thoughts of things.
So I have two more hands up, but I don't...
I'm not asking for a critique, am I? I'm just saying, I think there's, step one, there are funds to do something, at least from the POA standpoint, if we can help move those farther along so other conversations can happen, maybe something that we just try and do.
So while Angela's ready to answer that, I'm going to go ahead and just state something real briefly. From what I understand, the eradication is somewhere in the range of 40,000 to 50,000 that they've already agreed upon with this group to do the work, and is it, it's for both years or for just this year? Okay, so for this year and the next year, you'll be raising the same amount through your fees to do the same, the same type of work, but will need to be able to pay for the permit fees. And so what I've talked to Ed about as well, and the group, is that this year is the biggest time that they would need assistance with any type of, either waiver or from any type of fundraising source to pay, to cover those fees. Next year, they're hoping that their increase to the 900 homeowners would be able to suffice that temporarily for next year. That way, the long-term plan that was discussed earlier by Angela could cover or look in, because what happens is any type of project as such that goes to Blue Ribbon, next year would be the time to debate that and put in front of the Blue Ribbon to be prepared for '24. So the medium, the second plan or the contingency for next year is them raising their fees, which they've said that they're going to do. And so I just have to highlight one more thing, because I have different emergencies in my district, and this is very different than some other situations in my district, because this group has already contracted with an agency to do the work. It's already in place. We are not pushing it forward for them. They've done it, and they're looking for fees. Whereas other situations, it's not as such. And so I just want to make sure, because I don't want there to be any type of thought that we're taking preference, and I understand that that's going to be a big discussion after looking at this. So I just wanted to make sure that's stated so that it doesn't look like we're bringing something before the board to push something. It's been brought to us. So I'll go ahead and, I don't know if Angela's ready, but I'll go ahead and, who was first? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I was just going to respond to Supervisor Simon's idea about the Fish and Wildlife Committee. I think that's a great, great idea, and we didn't support that derby last year. And that also will sort of narrow the scope with the other places around the lake that Angela mentioned, that would be looking for this support too, because once we fund this, then every community with a lagoon is going to be looking for this assistance, and that's just not going to be doable with that Fish and Wildlife fund, which is not very large.
Doesn't increase that much at all?
Yeah.
I think it was around 20,000 left or something like that, if I remember correctly.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
That's still, I mean, if I'm on the outside, I'm saying, well, that's more than 13,000, just saying.
Love the idea, and I would even suggest why have a middle man of the Clear Lake Business Association where Fish and Wildlife might just be able to sponsor something like this automatically. But what I like is at least the community is willing to look at increasing their fees, because a part of me is kind of ideologically conflicted of private property. At what point does government go in to help out? When is it our turn to say, hey, let's provide resources, because I think we need long-term sustainability, and that's only going to happen if the private properties are able to provide that long-term sustainability, and then maybe we have some agreement of when it is that we come in, but I just don't know where that line is. But I think that Fish and Wildlife helps out with clearing that line, at least from my perspective, because that gift of public funds is always an issue that I definitely try to steer clear from, and I think we try to steer clear from. I do have a question. I know it's not necessarily about the POA, and that's what we're doing here, is having a conversation about that, but the other property that is not private property, what is the plan for that? Because I want to make sure that we also lead by example in how we deal with that. Do we have a plan at this moment in time to help and clear out some of that primrose? Because if the POA does its part and we're not able to do our part, then it's just going to keep coming right back and encroaching on their part.
Well, I think Angela said that she's working on that. So the direct answer is no, I don't think we have a plan for that right this moment. That's something that Angela's working on, and the HOA, if they just sprayed right along their shore and didn't do anything with that channel, it would, that would clearly be not a good use of those funds, because the channel also needs to be treated. So I, you can check with them, but I'm pretty sure their proposal included that, or the contractor's proposal included that area, recognizing that if you don't do that, it's pretty ineffective. I don't, I hope I answered the question, that we don't have, we, the County Watership Protection District, don't have a plan for doing anything in there.
I didn't get a time to look at the email. I know we got an email about our cannabis funds, and I know one of them is the environment, water quality, or something along those lines. Just, is there any money available within those categories?
Steven's on.
I haven't opened up the email either.
There he is.
There you go.
Thank you, Steven.
I do apologize, I was just unloading the chairs from an ATEC truck for the chambers. Can you restate the question?
I was wondering if there's, because the categories for cannabis of law enforcement, planning, there's risk reduction, but one of them, I forget which one category, but it also is kind of like environmental quality or environmental protection or something like that. Is there any funds available in those?
Yes, so we just sent out to your board an updated list. Are you thinking about for the planning, code enforcement, water resources, environmental health section?
Correct.
The remaining balance after putting in half the stabilization funds is a little over 2.5 million for that section.
Okay, thank you. Just for water resources, in case that you're thinking that it's tight in the budget to make everything happen, just want to make sure that you are aware of that availability, just because I think having a group effort rather than, it feels weird, we're talking about forgiving a waiver, but at the same time, they're going to do the reverse and take care of property that we should be taking care of as well, so it feels slightly awkward.
So that's just, that's for the state property that the county maintains, that portion of it only?
Yeah.
So is that the permit and the spraying?
I don't know what it all entails, but I think that we need to make sure to do our part in that area, not do our part for private areas. If they're going to be doing, moving forward with it, maybe working with Fish and Wildlife, I want to make sure that we move forward simultaneously so that we can make sure that we're taking care of our property the same way that they're doing for themselves.
Right, so I, so we shouldn't have them be paying the permit fees for the land that we're responsible for, but also the portion of the spraying too?
Yeah.
Supervisor Simon?
And more, just to follow, add on to that, just making Scott aware and Angela aware that for the overall lake plan, that's where the pool of, that request, okay? All right, thank you very much.
All right, and so Angela, I don't know if you wanted to answer the question I think that was posed earlier about the timeframe that it needs to be sprayed, if, even if they conduct the spray, because as scheduled and agreed upon, it would still make a difference or it wouldn't make a difference, or I think that was what was stated right.
Yeah, this is Angela. There's two points to that. So it is the end of the season, is plants are sinning, they're dying back. That is what the primrose is doing, so they're not intaking, they're not, they're not eating food, basically. So they're not conducting photosynthesis, they're not eating food, so they would not take the herbicide in as effectively as they would, say, in June or July. I believe primrose starts really growing around here, June, July, so that would be my recommendation for when they should target herbicide application, to be as effective as they, as the Keys want it to be, and as, if you want to see a difference. The primrose is going to grow back next year. You know, it's been dropping seeds all season. There's all, so that's my recommendation, and I give that recommendation to anybody that would call me now and ask about herbicide treatments, and, you know, want to, whether they're spending, you know, $200 to $50,000, which is around the range of some of these treatments around the lake, both for the treatment, the herbicide product and the application, and the permit fees. And I would recommend, you know, it's at the end of the season, about a month, you're going to see it all starting to get brown anyways and die down. So is it really a good use of money right now to do a treatment, as opposed to putting all those funds together and booking that herbicide applicator company, Waterworks, making sure that you have them for next year in June, when they would otherwise be very busy across the state and doing other projects, booking them and get them come in and do a spot treatment of primrose as soon as it starts growing. And the primrose will be over less area, and so it will cost them less money in treatment fees, as well as less money in permit fees, and it'll be more effective because the plant's actively growing and taking the herbicide in, and it'll get more of the plant before it goes to seed, which will also help decrease the number. So it's just about working with the biology of the plant, the life history, to maximize the impacts. Otherwise, you're not going to be doing a good use of your money, you're going, we're going through all this process, you're not going to see difference, and then guess what? Next year, you're going to primrose growing back in all the same places that were treated. That's just my suggestion. I've been, that's what I say, recommend to anybody that calls my office this time of year and asks for a primrose treatment right now. So that was the, I think, response for that question about the time of year.
Yeah, that answers my question, so I heard it right then.
Thank you, Angela, and Supervisor...
I just want to follow up the question with, what kind of timeline are we looking at for the effects to be seen of the spray?
During the growing season, I mean, you can see plants start browning within a week to two weeks. So we have some county treatments we do with primros, and there's also some private, other private properties that do primrose treatments, and you can see those impacts within a week to two weeks. The other thing that limits some of the treatment is dissolved oxygen in the water. The state of California with our permits will not allow herbicide treatments when the dissolved oxygen in the water is below five hearts per million. This time of year, not only is it very hot, but a lot of other things are dying, like the algae and other plants that are in the water, and they're consuming oxygen. So you're seeing a decrease in oxygen throughout the water column. So Waterworks might not be able to treat all the areas of primrose right now this year. Again, the best time of year to do herbicide treatments, when you have rich oxygen water and the plants are really taking in that herbicide, is during June, July, the peak growing season.
First chair.
So it sounds like we have time to bring this back, to develop a plan and work on this for late spring for treatment?
I think according to Angela, yes. I don't know if the, I don't know if the POA feels that way, but...
Yeah, to be clear, that's our recommendation. Angela is educated in this, but if the POA wants to pursue this and they want to move forward, we're not going to tell them they can't spray. However, she did bring up a very good point, that, you know, one of the tests that we do is prior to the spray application, and one of the things we're checking is for the dissolvable oxygen. The contractor comes out and checks the dissolved oxygen. If it doesn't meet those minimum standards, then they won't be able to spray. So this is a challenging time of the year to be doing the herbicide application, but that's Angela's recommendation. It's totally up to the, to the POA if they want to pursue it. But again, the conditions have to, have to meet certain standards.
I see. So you're saying that the recommendation from the Water Resources, according to Angela, is that the spray that's proposed to be conducted, it might not happen because of the tests that need to be done previous to...
The contractor will check the dissolved oxygen in the water, and if it's not above five, which was the number that Angela mentioned, if it's not above five, then they can't spray.
I see, okay. And so, so yeah, I guess that answers that, but I had another thing to say, but I forgot what it was.
And even the Fish and Wildlife process, it doesn't take an eternity, but it does need to go through the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Board, be approved, and then it needs to come back to us, because we're the ones who finally approve since it's in our budget.
I did see, and I know I closed public input, but I did just want to mention that we did receive ecomments from Patricia Moore, Donna Michalwitz, and Michael Herman. Ed Leagann, obviously, he spoke here, but he also put one into, and I'm trying to do a better job of announcing that we've had other public comments, so when it comes to ecomments. Angela, you have your hand up? Go ahead and...
Thank you. Last thing. I am willing to work with the POA over the winter time and bring this item to the Fish and Wildlife Committee. I serve on that as representation of Water Resources, so I'm totally willing to sponsor this topic and item to that committee to try to get them some funds, and then also to work with them over the winter to make a plan for a comprehensive primrose plan for the Keys. That is, that is my job as invasive species coordinator for the county, and I'm willing and able and ready to do that with the POA, because I understand this issue is very important and is having impacts to the whole community there. So I'm willing to do that over the winter. I just want them to know that, and the board to know that also.
Thank you. All right, so I think with that, there's a recommended action to be taken. One of the things I wanted to state was, I know that there was discussion about an alternate plan to assist with funding, talking to Clogba, I think it is, who sponsors the fishing. That was brought up by you, right Supervisor Simon, about the fish derby or whatever it was, and working with that.
Well, they brought it up. I was just going off the idea, they were talking about fundraising for things in that area, and I think this is, this is one of those things, and our part from the county side would be having that conversation with the Fish and Wildlife, which Angela says she's willing to do, have the conversation, and then it can come back here, because we don't want to put, obviously, ourselves in a position, we've had a couple of these conversations recently about waiving fees, and I think we need to stay consistent. It's not an easy decision, but I think it's the right decision.
All right. All right, so with that, Anita, how do we move forward when it comes to this? We have to address the recommended action.
Well, if you, if you want to take any action today on this item, and probably to give direction to Scott, I believe Water Resources has already, Supervisor Simon said, said they're willing to take this to Fish and Wildlife when it comes to fees and participation with regard to the catfish derby, et cetera. So you can simply confirm that that's your intention, and you want that to move forward? that that's your intention and you want that to move forward? And any other direction you want to give to Scott at this point?
All right. I think, do you have everything you need, Scott, from our discussion? Or is there anything else that we need to, for direction wise, to, do, do we need to address? I think, I think we've covered everything, right, is what I'm?
Well, I, I think so, yeah. I, I mean, basically what I, what I'm hearing from you is, we're going to have staff work with the POA and go to the Fish and Wildlife Committee for some outside funding to help them out. And, and then my staff, as, as Angela has, has said, is continuing to work on a, on a lakewide program that would not only benefit the Keys, but, but many other homeowners associations that are around the lake. That's going to be outside of any specific project that this homeowners association has plans to do. The issue, I think, is still on the table about, my department charges a fee for a permit.
Right.
And so, you know, I'm happy to move forward with, working with them and going to the Fish and Wildlife Committee, but I, I think that that issue still remains, and I think needs to be decided.
All right. So you were first, and then you were second?
I, I think the issue is move, if they have the funding to pay for the permits, which I don't think we've said at all to waive them, or at this moment even reduce them, just finding other ways and means to make that happen. But my question is to Ms. Grant, I kind of feel like I went full circle in my mind, that we're still back at the public-private, and that we need to make sure that if it's coming out of the Fish and Wildlife, it's still us saying yes. And if we were uncomfortable earlier saying yes, we probably need to come up with something that explains why this is not a gift of public-private funds, or does it help to go through this different avenue? Because I just kind of feel like we went this way and came right back to the same place of us approving something.
Oh, well, the avenue doesn't, doesn't actually matter, putting it through a different, pulling it from a different pocket, obviously, doesn't matter. I think what your board had already talked about was that there were certain public purposes here. There's some limitations on that, and some limitations on what your board can do at present, if I understood what you were talking about correctly. And so moving through Fish and Wildlife is something that, that allows for a little bit more flexibility, and there may be an avenue for, for funds. Certainly even the boating and waterways at the state level is, is another avenue that might provide some kind of assistance here. But yes, there always has to be the override, that this has a public purpose. Again, there can be a private benefit that is incidental, but your action, not the action of the entire project, but your action has to reflect a public purpose. And there were several points made during the meeting today, and your board made, your board repeated or made them, as to what you found to be a public purpose.
All right. And so Supervisor Simon, you were?
Yeah. You know, I completely agree with you, Scott. You know, really, the, the main topic today was the waiving of the permit fees, and if we're done with discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
And so I was, just briefly, before you make the motion, I was going to state that with consultation with Angela further, and working with the group of the POA, there was a mention about cannabis discretionary funds as well, also looking at making sure it's not a gift of public funds. Entertaining that idea, I'll continue to meet on, on the side about that, because of course I still have some. I want to make sure it's done in a way that will effectively work if it's not a gift of public funds. Of course, there's two, three hurdles I have to jump through, but I'm willing to assist with their initiative this year, if possible, on that end. But of course, I want to make sure that those benchmarks are checked first. So just letting you know that, I'll work that route. And I've spoke with, I've spoke with Scott about this briefly, that, that may be something I look at, but of course, we have to make sure all of those things are in place first. So, yeah.
And before you make your motion, I, I'd also request just a little clarification on, there was some discussion about the, the Stubbs Canal, the, the area that was state that the county maintains. And I'd, I'd like some clarification on what your board's opinion is, or your direction is on the costs associated with the treatment of that canal.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I think if it's county responsibility, then we can use cannabis funding for that, for the permits and the spraying, and the treatment of that. That's my thought. I wouldn't want that be, to be passed on to the homeowners association, if it's our responsibility.
That's what you were asking Stephen about?
Yeah. That, that's why I brought up cannabis funds, to see how we can make sure you have the money in your budget for it.
Right. But then you did say something about lakewide, and I think that's a scope that we should probably develop and understand before we implement this project. So we have time to look at that and what that would cost. And if that's a stopgap for this next year, while the, hopefully the Blue Ribbon Committee can get state funding for an annual program to stop that, just, to, to treat primrose around the lake. But I, I think that's a, something that we could look at for next year, June, next June, spring. Sure there's other properties that the county is responsible for that has an impact, right?
Potentially.
Yeah.
All right. Did that clarify it?
Yes.
Okay.
I was wondering the same.
I was waiting here.
No, it.
Okay.
If, if I, well, I, I think I know what you're going to do. And there's going to be some additional discussions, obviously with my staff and, and the POA. And knowing that answer will help me and help us in those discussions.
Okay.
And so just before, one last thing, I want to ask you, Ed, just one question. Are you still planning to do this project regardless? Okay. I just needed to know that. Thank you. And he stated yes for anyone that didn't hear, because he didn't come up to the mic, and I didn't ask him to. So I just wanted to make sure everyone that's watching knows that I asked him that, and that's what he stated. So, sorry, Mo, go ahead.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure we had all the discussions. So, you know, obviously, I just think for this one, we need to, you know, I may not get support, but I'm going to put it out there. I move to, well, let's see how I put this this down. I move to approve staff's recommendation of not waiving the permit fees. Does that work?
Second.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries 3-1. And so with that, we will, next steps would be, I know that they're going to still work on their project as well. I'll continue follow-up on the side with my discussion with you all, and some other things that I talked about during the meeting. So with that, we'll take a short break, and we move on to our next item. This one was pretty lengthy, so we'll come back at, what, 2:55? 2:55 is good?
I'm fine.
I mean, and no pun intended, but sometimes there is some discussions that get us far into weeds, so. Anyhow, so that item's closed. We're back to, I think we talked about, which one was it, Jessica, your item?
Oh, we can push that to next week.
Okay. So, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven point? Four, that's right. So that's the one that we'll be looking at for next week? Or is that something we can, we're covering right now?
Next week.
Okay, next week. So there's no more non-timed items that we haven't covered? There's still 5.2? Oh, okay. So we don't need to do 5.2 neither?
You got moved to October 4.
Okay, that one got moved. So 5.8, waive the competitive bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 2-38.2, based on determination that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit to the county. Authorize special districts administrator assistant purchasing agent to issue purchase order not to exceed $25,000 to DXP Turbo for the purchase of two replacement high service pumps. And Scott Harder, Director of Special Districts, is here, and we'll give the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. So yeah, I asked for this to be pulled from the consent calendar today, because there was an error in the estimated cost or the, the maximum not to exceed that we would like to request for this. Pretty straightforward. As you can see in the memo, we contacted four vendors to obtain quotes. Only one was willing and able to provide a quote back. The others wanted to charge us engineering costs to essentially ensure that the pump was designed properly for the purpose that we needed it for. DXP Turbo included that in their quote, provided it free of charge for the design of those pumps to ensure that they would meet our needs. And they are also the local regional rep for the pumps in our area. So for those reasons, we're requesting that you waive the competitive bidding process, that there's no economic benefit to go out to bid. We tried, we're not successful. And, but we do want to ask that the not to exceed amount be $35,000. The memo amount was based on the incorrect line of the foot. So with tax and shipping, it's going to come in a little under $30,000. We're anticipating $29,000 and change, but for a little cushion in case there's any other unforeseen events, we'd request that the not to exceed amount be up to $35,000.
All right. Any questions for Scott? I'll open it up to the public if there's anybody on Zoom that wants to comment on this item on the agenda. Not seeing any hands up. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the competing, competitive bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 2-38.2, based on a determination that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit to the county, and authorize special districts administrator assistant purchasing agent to issue a purchase order not to exceed $35,000 to DXP Turbo for the purchase of two replacement high service pumps.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right.
Ready to B?
Oh, that was A and B.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So with that, I think that covers all of the polled consent agenda items. It looks like all we have left is calendars. So who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Obviously, at the meeting yesterday, I did not attend the, you know, what'll be reported on, the Risk Reduction Authority meeting. I have board meetings today. Wednesday, kind of have an open calendar, but there are a couple constituent issues that I have down in my district. I'm going to be reaching out to at least one constituent. I know that has also been reaching out to Supervisor Pyska. I will get a response back to my constituent on that. One other thing, I'd like to make an announcement that, as you guys know, that PG&E is doing underwriting work in Lake County. They are going to be doing some flyover stuff. I just want to make an announcement out to public that I was informed by Melinda Rivera, that they will be doing some helicopter work over their lines in the South District. It'll be flying around, I'm pretty sure it's the 28th, 29th this week. So in South County, you're going to be here, here in a helicopter, flying the lines as they're doing their work. Obviously, it's their responsibility to get this message out, but also mine too, because I'll be the ones getting the phone calls. So I just want to make that announcement that that will be, be happening in, in the next couple of days. So I will field those calls, but I did want to make that announcement today, that that'll be happening in our area. Anytime helicopters flying around, questions come out. So it should be, hopefully, a blue helicopter. I'm not sure, but hopefully it's recognizable, which will make it a little bit easier conversation as we are having those conversations. On Friday, it looks like there have been some things added. I'm sorry if that's my phone. Yes, it is. Apologize. Another constituent that I need to follow up on, on a different issue, but a long-term issue. On Friday, there has been another meeting put together by the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. I will be in attendance to that. I appreciate Supervisor Pyska covering me the, the last couple of meetings, but I will be in attendance to that. And then this weekend, preparing to travel for some personal reasons and loss in the family. And then back here on Monday, or Tuesday, the 4th, I'll be out of town on the 3rd. Susan, that means we'll probably move our meeting around on Friday, because it keeps conflicting, but we'll go ahead and do that. And then I'll give my calendar for next week. I do just want to, um, bring the light anyway, some of the collaboration conversations. I, I'll just say it in my calendars and travel and stuff. I really appreciate the collaboration conversations we have as a board here. It'll be great when we do have a fifth member, but I just, you know, I want to thank you for that. You know, it's hard and challenging, as we said, to bring people and communities together. And I think some of the conversations had here today are, you know, are refreshing, but I think it continues to happen. Obviously, with help and guidance from administration, Anita keeping us on track, but other things. But I do appreciate, do appreciate that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Supervisor Simon. Supervisor Spatia?
Thank you. Let's see here. Tomorrow, there's first five meeting. I'm also going to be going to Lake County Fire Protection, and as well as the Conacta Unified School District Boards. Again, just to keep up with whatever it is that they're working on and, and their needs and listening in to that. Have a canceled meeting, but it's still somewhat something that Chair Crandall and myself are working on and providing feedback about the updated website design. So we just submit our comments, but things are moving and progressing. And again, thank you to Shane French for taking the lead on that. Later on, have a meeting. We had a meeting here regarding the Syringe Exchange Program. Safe RX was brought up, and so we've been meeting since then with Hope Rising and others to figure out what is Safe RX 2.0. How, how do we move forward with dealing with what we're dealing with now with the overdoses, and what can we do better? So those conversations have been enjoyable. Again, on Friday, joining the Housing Navigation with Behavioral Health. And at this point in time, I'm planning to spend quite a lot of time in the office as well to finish up that database. I could bring it back to you and make sure I've made it go through its testing phase as well. And so that will complete my week. And Metal Creek Restoration is happening on Monday, the 3rd, and a meeting with CAO to prepare for Monday on the, meeting on the 4th. I know that just last week was filled with meetings and budget in our normal Tuesday. But on Saturday, joined the K-9 unit from CPD for their fundraiser. Just wanted to share appreciation. You just spoke of collaboration, Supervisor Simon. The amount of sheriff deputies and sheriff staff that were there, it's enjoyable to see that the support that goes across the lines and boundaries, because we're all doing the same work, and making sure that we have the tools at our disposal to be the most effective we can be is important to all, and it's appreciated to see. Other than that, that's all.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Pyska?
So Friday night, I did the Farm to Fork Dinner on Main Street, Kelseyville, and then the Pear Festival Parade and Day of Festival. It's like always right in the world if Kelseyville has their Pear Festival. And it was just the happiest of days. Everybody was smiling, and it was just one of those events in the community where it kind of felt like it was never gone, but, but also really restorative. So, and I did drive a big old giant tractor with Maria and Stacy Matina, so that was pretty crazy and awesome. And so it was just really a special weekend, a lot, lot going on, but really, really worth it. And huge, huge thanks to the Pear Festival Planning Committee and Kelseyville Business Association, because they, they just, it was another fantastic event, and, and just so needed and so perfect. So tomorrow, agenda review, then Supervisor Crandall and I are meeting with? Dr. Shelley Holt?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I don't know why I thought it was Pat.
Then I am going out to the Monte Cristo property in the afternoon. Thursday morning, I have the department head meeting. And then Friday is a very busy morning with the Risk Reduction Authority. And then it looks like I have four meetings overlapping between 10:00 AM and 11:00. So the Climate Action Meeting? So the climate action meeting, you know, we had a two-hour meeting yesterday, which was really great. Still working on that, building that grant application. And the collaboration for that project has been so incredible. We have, you know, we have N C O, we have Red Cross, we have Scotts Valley Tribe, Clerk, S S C R A. Clear Lake City Manager joined us. Legport is always on those calls. So developing this project is just, it's just been so incredible. So I'm looking forward to pushing that through. We've got one more week until that's due. I will probably have to miss the Home Hardening Meeting with Cal O E S because of the action, Climate Action Meeting. We have our weekly staff meeting about trees. But then there's also this, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research has been doing these pilot programs about developing woody biomass in different regions around the state, but we've been left out of those regions. So these biomass strategy pilots have cohorts. And so I got invited to one of those cohorts for a little bit more research and understanding on how those pilot programs have been built. And then I have a meeting in the afternoon. What, it's a, this is a research study on communities that have lost homes. And so I participated in the survey a while ago. And then this is a kind of a kickstart training cohort on Zoom. And I believe we're photographing a lot of things, documenting what the community's been through since wildfire. And then another research, I think that follow-up is in December. So not entirely sure what that program is, but I'm doing it. Saturday morning, I'm going to ride in the Conacti Challenge with my daughter. It is the very last Conacti Challenge. I think it's 25 years. This is the farewell ride. So I'm doing the easy 20 miles section. Sunday is the Fiddler's Jam at Eli Stage Shop, but I'm not sure I'm going to make it to that. And then Monday, I'd love to go to Fiddler Jam, but it's just, it's, the weekends are getting a little too full. Monday, I have my meeting with Susan in the morning. And then home hardening discussion with, with community development. Because as that program develops, it's really important that we have the capacity within that department to handle it. So that is everything for my week.
Alright, thank you for that. I'll start out with a meeting that I had yesterday. I got to meet with Cecilia Aguilar-Curry and one of her staffers, Rita, to discuss the, and I know that I have these issues in my district, but I know that we all share issues when it comes to projects, permits, licenses, things of that nature that we have to wait on that are state-regulated. And so I was asking her because of our situation, and I know this is commonly brought up in different, I know R C R C and other spots. But I just gave a scenario. And of course, a lot of it was based around the situation that we've been having to talk about with Middle Creek Flood Project. And so on many occasions, I mentioned that we're in a situation where we get something moving. We get to a position where a project may move forward. And then we lose the permit because of an emergency or just because it happens. We lose funding, we don't get the funding, something else takes place. Here we are eight years later and we're stuck again at the same spot, public's angry, and things like that. So I was just basically reaching out to her about them working on something for emergent situations. I mean, we are a county that's, you know, plagued with emergencies, fires, floods, all of those things. They're all imminent. We've all told them. She met with us when we went to the Middle Creek Restoration Project and told her the levees are going to fail there for sure, if they haven't already. And so I just was emphasizing, we have these issues, we have hurdles. Is there something that can be done on your end to meet with you and you and a couple of other state legislators? Meet with them, find something we can work through to get these projects done so that that way our constituents and our citizens aren't put in harm's way because of the lack of work being done. Because a lot of times, the citizens, they attribute it towards us. And at times, it's not even on us. It's on the state. And I'll just even say it, Army Corps of Engineers is another one. They, I explained to her, every two years, they have someone new. We accustomed the new person to it, then what happens is they get a new person. We have to do the same with them. And then we're sitting there waiting, just like we're waiting on a legal review from their team right now. And then they don't give us an answer. So I'm just, I know that that's not a thing she could do about it, but we also invited. So I invited her tomorrow to our workshop that we'll be having in Upper Lake. But also just to other things too. Just she worked, she worked with her staff to try and invite Senator McGuire's staff. Also invited some of the, you know, Congressman Thompson's staff as well to ensure we have everyone there just to kind of witness it or, you know, or just be a part of it so they know what's going on. And so I know that at times, you know, it gets to a position where I think the citizens think we're not doing anything or trying to push these things, but we are, we just can only push it so far in certain situations. So it was a really good discussion. I really appreciate her giving me that time. It's been a couple of weeks since I requested, but we got to it. And I just want to say that I appreciated that meeting very much because I'm hoping we can go somewhere with it. So just wanted to highlight that I had that yesterday. Tomorrow, of course, we have a gender review in the morning, meeting with Dr. Holt?
Dr. Shelley.
Dr. Shelley, why did I say Holt? I don't know. I keep getting everyone's name mixed up. Matthew and you, and then Supervisor Pyska. And then we'll, then I have the workshop in the evening. So I've got to prepare for that and set up the Zoom. And I know that Sam's going to be there to help us too. And so we'll see how that goes. I know Water Resources will be there and many other entities. Talk about that situation in the Middle Creek Flood Project. And so there's that tomorrow. Thursday, we have a department head meeting. Also be working on a couple of other initiatives I have on this task list that I, it's still ongoing, that I need to get to. So that, and then Friday, I have a meeting with a constituent, but we haven't nailed down a specific time or date. I know they presented one for Wednesday, but I'm too busy tomorrow for that. But I'm working on that as a potential project. And well, it is a project that was passed, but I just wanted to make sure I go to the site first. So we'll see how that goes. And then Monday, Middle Creek Restoration, meeting with C A O Parker. And then I know there's something else, but I don't have it written down. But then we'll be back here on Tuesday for the Board of Supervisors meeting. So with that, I think that covers our calendars. We'll go into closed session and I'll read off the closed session. So 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956. Point 9.1, Flesh versus County of Lake. 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956. Point 9D1, Center for Biological Diversity at AL versus County of Lake at AL. 8.3, public employee evaluation, Behavioral Health Director. And with that, we'll go into closed session. And thank you for tuning in. I'm not sure if we're coming out with any type of action. So, but just, I don't think we will be. So we'll, but we'll see how it goes from here. Alright, thank you.